The October 25th, 2022, regular meeting of the Hawthorne City Council is called to order at 6:05 PM. I'm going to ask our city treasurer to do the invocation tonight. And I'll be asking Diana if you can help us with the pledge of allegiance, please.
All right. Just ask everyone to bow their head. Dear Lord, please help us to have a very productive meeting, always keeping the city and what benefits the city the most in our decision-making abilities, and for a very peaceful meeting. Amen.
Amen.
Okay, everybody rise and put your right hand over your heart, face the flag. Ready, begin.
Thank you to both of you. Appreciate that. Thank you guys for your service. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Montero.
Present.
Councilmember Ray English.
Here.
Councilmember Valentine.
Here.
Mayor Potem Patterson. Mayor Vargas.
Here.
Everybody is present. Upset for Mayor Potem Patterson.
I'm going to bring up the appointment of one of our potential candidate, depending on everybody's approval, for for the Veterans Commission. So, in order to do that, that's item number 23 on the agenda. In order to do that, I'm going to ask the the audience if there's any comments on this oral communications regarding to item 23. Is that right, Mr. City Attorney? Just so that we can bring it up? Okay. Is there any comment? Okay. Seeing that there's no comments, I declare oral communications on item 23 over. Ms. Fay Johnson, are you here? Please come up. As you know, we've been having a vacancy on the Veterans Commission for a little bit, and we've had a great group of candidates for this position, and Ms. Fay Johnson has risen to the top. So, I'd like to make a motion to approve Fay Johnson to the Veterans Affairs Commission.
Second.
Okay.
To the chair.
Yes, sir.
Can she tell us about herself before we vote, please?
Oh, you had your, well, fine, sure.
Hi, I'm Fay Johnson. I'm a citizen and a resident of Hawthorne, and I'm also a retired veteran from the US Air Force, and I also work at the Veterans Administration currently.
Fantastic, thank you.
Along those lines, what plans do you have as a new member of the commission?
My first step is to come in and see what is being done currently, and to get in basically where I fit in, bring my skills of being a veteran and wanting to help the community, and also my connections with the Veterans Administration that I currently have to see what services we can bring into our community for our veterans.
Any questions? Any comments before? Okay, so, please vote.
The vote reprints, Mayor and Council voting yes with Councilmember Patterson absent.
Congratulations, ma'am.
Congratulations, Ms. Johnson.
Commissioner-elect.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. And you'll be sworn by the City Clerk's office at a later day, or maybe tonight, at an appropriate time, right? So, congratulations. Just give her a round of applause. Our commissioners, all our commissioners take time out of their schedule, out of their busy lives to step up and volunteer, to be able to make some of the greatest decisions on behalf of the city. They're an extension of the City Council. We have the Veterans Commission, we have the Parks and Rec Commission, the Civil Service Commission, and the Planning Commission, the Youth Commission as well. And we also have other boards that people are involved with, dealing with the airport and other committees that we have. The Civil Service, yeah, I mentioned that. So, yeah, very important commission. So, thank you once more. So now, we return to the proclamation certificates and presentations. Our first item tonight is a presentation. Captain Tomatani, please proceed. On life-saving measures, presentation for the Hawthorne Police Department, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Mr. City Manager, and City Clerk. It's a pleasure to be here this afternoon. If it's okay, I would like to call up three staff members from the Community Services Department. That would be Kaylee Arias, Brandon Hart, and Gerardo Ariardi. I'll go ahead and begin to spare them a little bit of embarrassment, as I know that they didn't necessarily want public acknowledgement here. But on Wednesday, October 5th, these three Community Services staff members were working at the Betty Ainsworth Sports Complex. They noticed a woman seated inside who appeared to be slumped over in her chair. Concerned for her welfare, they approached her and found her to be unresponsive. They took immediate action, assessing her airway and breathing, and calling for the fire department. At no point did any of them hesitate to use the skills that they had been trained in. CPR was immediately started, and an AED was retrieved and made ready to go. This willingness to get involved and the teamwork they displayed prevented the woman's further deterioration prior to the arrival of the police and fire departments. Eventually, care for the woman was taken over by the fire department, who transported her to a local hospital where she was able to make a complete recovery. Were it not for Kaylee, Brandon, and Gerardo, the woman's situation might have gone unnoticed, and treatment might have been delayed until it was too late. It is reasonable to assume that their actions saved this woman's life, and at the very least, their actions prevented her from any possible permanent impairment. In similar situations, our police department staff usually have some idea of the event that they're responding to. But in this case, Kaylee, Brandon, and Gerardo literally walked into a crisis and took immediate action. Kaylee Arias, Brandon Hart, and Gerardo Ariardi demonstrated a characteristic that Chief Ishi looks for in any potential applicant for the police department, and that is compassion. In appreciation for their actions on that day, it's a pleasure to present each of them with a certificate of recognition and a corresponding life-saving ribbon for a job well done. Really quickly, these are life-saving ribbons that we initiated at the department with the implementation of our medical director program. So, our officers that wear this on their dress uniforms have all, in the course of their duties, saved somebody's life.
Okay. Congratulations to the group. If we can take a picture with the recipients, it'd be great. See you guys up here so we can take a pic. Thank you for stepping up to protect one of our city's residents. Any comment from the council in the meeting?
Yes, I'd like to, I'd like to comment.
While they come up here?
Yes. Thank you so much for stepping up and showing us what the true meaning of the City of Good Neighbors is, for caring about your fellow citizens and someone who was in trouble. So many citizens don't do that. So many people just sit back and watch to wait, and wait to see if somebody else will do it. And sometimes, there's no one else to do it. So, thank you so much for stepping up and being in the forefront of helping to possibly save someone's life. Much appreciated.
Sure. Again, I equate Ms. Valentine, said, you know, thank you very much, because, you know, you guys, I know you guys are outstanding workers, because I know I have the pleasure of being working close to all of you over there at the Community Service and the Park. So, for you to step up even to save lives, you know, that goes beyond the call of duty, but like you say, you have compassion, right? And you know when to see somebody in trouble, so you rush to save their lives. So again, thank you very much, and especially, like I say, you know, you guys are outstanding workers over there, so my hat goes off to you. Thank you.
Congratulations. You are true heroes. And at the end of the day, you know, when they say, "If you see something, say something," you did more than that. You saved someone's life. And so, thank you for that, and I commend you and honor you this evening. But more importantly, it's a great learning experience. I say that because we need more like you. And it could be great in experiencing something like that so that you know exactly what to look for, right? If something else were to happen like this in the future again, you'd know exactly what to do. So, congratulations again.
Madam Clerk, the guidelines for oral communications.
Pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.3, all remarks should be addressed to the City Council as a body and not to any individual council member. During oral communication, speakers shall have three minutes to state their business. The Brown Act prohibits the City Council from providing a detailed response or acting upon any items not contained on the agenda. The governing bodies as a body shall have the discretion at the close of oral communications to refer any remarks to the City Manager for study, investigation, report, and or recommendation.
Thank you so much. Wow, we have a lot of people wanting to speak, City Council. Jasmine Leon Carrero? Yes. We're going to defer to our state officials' representatives so that she could give us the scoop on what the state senator is doing for us.
Yes, hello. Well, I'm actually just here today. Hello and good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council Members. I just wanted to share a couple of events that the senator is going to have in his district in the next month or two. The first is actually our virtual town hall on emergency preparedness, and this is in partnership with the California Department of Insurance. It's going to be tomorrow from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM, and you'll hear from experts on what you can do to be ready in case of an event of an emergency, such as an earthquake, a fire, or a flood. We're also partnering with Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara for this, to feature special guests, including California Earthquake Authority, American Red Cross LA, FEMA, and LA County Fire Department. So again, this is a virtual event, so you don't have to leave your home or your office seat to do this or see this. And you can register on our page in the Events tab, or you can call us at 310-412-6120, and we'll send you a Zoom link. Another event, we're partnering with ADAP to host the DEA National Prescription Takeback Event. And this is going to be this Saturday, October 29th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Curtis Tucker Center of Community Wellness in Inglewood at 123 West Manchester Boulevard. And you'll just bring your expired and unused medication to be properly disposed of, rather than being it in the house and have access to children, or throwing it in the, you know, in the trash or receptacle or toilet, which is not good for the environment either. So, and it'll also be a health and wellness fair with free resources and giveaways. And next month, Senator Bradford will have his turkey giveaway. This is what he does every year for the past 12 years, I believe, since he was a Gardena City Council member. And we'll be giving away free frozen turkeys or pork roasts while supplies last, and it will be at El Camino College on November 22nd from 10:00 AM to 12:00 noon, and the line will start at 9:00 AM. And yeah, feel free to come by, and we hope to see you at all the events. Again, I'll leave these flyers outside. And if you want more information, like I said, you can call me at 310-412-6120. And we hope to have the senator sometime this month or next to provide a legislative update. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Please send our regards to the state senator, please, and he's welcome to come anytime he would like to speak to us. Joseph Gemlick, Items 5 and 6, Traffic Safety, Item 22, Outdoor Dining. Sir, welcome.
Good evening. So, for those who might recognize me, I am Joseph Gemlick, and I have mentioned traffic safety in pretty much every one of my public comments here so far. So, with respect to that, I am glad to see Items 5 and 6 on the agenda, in which the city is receiving additional funding for traffic enforcement. It should come as a surprise to no one who lives here that there are indeed dangerous road users on our roads. And so, more traffic safety is needed. I'm also a bit of a stickler for the rules, if you recall my previous comments. So, I would like to see more enforcement. However, I would like to take this moment to remind the city that the only laws that can be consistently enforced 24/7 are the laws of physics, and that part of what makes these road users dangerous is the design of the roads themselves. In order to get the most out of these safety improvements, I think it would be well-advised for the city to combine this with efforts to change the designs of the roads where danger and accidents occur. If the city designs wide lanes that are freeway-like in appearance, it should surprise no one that people end up going at freeway-like speeds on these roads. Moving on to the second topic of outdoor dining, I just see this as a discussion item, and so I don't know exactly what is intended here. But I'm just here as a resident and a consumer who is very much fond of outdoor dining. I appreciate it. I would like to see more of it in Hawthorne. And I think it's a good use of our public space that builds more of a social fabric for our communities, whether it's just being able to see what people are eating as you walk by, see that that place is popular, happening, that the food looks good as you walk by, or whether it's just seeing friendly faces that you recognize in passing. Outdoor dining sometimes can have unpleasant aspects to it, and I would just like the city to always realize which of those aspects are like fundamental, and which ones are due to the design of our city and are things that we as humans can change to make outdoor dining better. That'll be the end of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for being here. You're an engineer?
Uh, no.
Yeah, because you know, you've been bringing up some really good items to us. Thank you, sir. You're always welcome. George Gordon Michael Migo, please. Important issues.
Hello, everyone. Gordon Michael Legal, native and resident of Hawthorne since October 8th, 1952. California Governor Gavin Newsom, four years, his term of office, report card. Cities were stripped of land use controls on housing, SB 9, SB 10 in 2021, SB 6 and AV 2011 in 2022, and AV 2097 also this year. Residential units, the arena numbers are unacceptable. High-density projects are in environmental disasters. Homeless crisis growing in major cities due to high cost of living from government policies. Unemployment, $31 billion lost through fraud. Payments for legal claims delayed for months. Jobs, large corporations moving out of state, contract workers forced to be employees because of AV 5. COVID, disastrous policies ruined the lives of many people with mandates, lockdowns, closures, and so on. Healthcare, unsafe drugs for virus resulted in adverse effects and numerous deaths. RFK Hospital was not rebuilt and reopened, even though there was tens of billions of dollars of COVID funds available. Energy, unrealistic plans and unreliable sources. Fuel prices are high from taxes, levies, and so on. Water, densely populated cities are not smart growth. Desalinization plants can relieve shortages, and also, we need to increase storage capacity. Fires, thousands of single-family homes are destroyed in urban and rural areas. State lacks sufficient, excuse me, resources. For example, retired DC-10s and 747s converted into water-dropping aircraft due to misplaced priorities. Crime, violence in our society has increased to significant levels in various cities. Lack of real consequences embolden criminals. With an objective analysis of the foregoing, it becomes quite clear that Governor Gavin Newsom has not properly served the people of California. Therefore, Gavin Newsom does not deserve to be re-elected as governor of California. On another topic, the upcoming Measure I in the City of Hawthorne, the Charter Cities. The basic idea of charter cities, you know, having more semi-autonomous control of various things going on in our city, land use and so forth, is a great idea. Unfortunately, as I've talked to a lot of people throughout the city, the salary issue is going to cause them to vote no. And that should have been a separate issue and determined after, you know, passing a charter amendment, minus that. And then, any salary should be put to a vote of the people, you know, give them different options. And just one last item, LA County.
Three minutes, your time is up, sir.
I just want to say, LA County Measure A, the Sheriff Measure, Board of Supervisors should not be trying to usurp the voters' choices in that matter, so I urge a strong no.
Thank you, sir. Ginger Nix, I believe it's Ginger Nix, from what I see here? Dispensaries?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I feel like I'm in a room full of public speakers, which I am not, but Councilmember Angie English said tonight, "If you see something, say something," and that's basically why I'm here. I've never been to one of these meetings before. I'm happy to be here. Thank you all for your service and taking time out to do what is likely a thankless job many days. So, with that, I heard today about Ordinance 2235, and it concerned me as a resident, a homeowner, a parent, and somebody who lives here in Hawthorne. And it's my understanding that this will be voted on maybe in the coming weeks. I'm, like I said, heard about it today, so don't want to give any misinformation, but at some point, it will be potentially up to you to vote on this, and I hope you'll consider voting no. As a resident, I would gladly forego any revenue that those dispensaries might bring into our town, and I know that every city needs money, but I would gladly, as a resident, say no thank you to money brought in that way in exchange for helping more small businesses and bringing other businesses to our city that could also bring revenue in those same spaces. And with that, I just, I will probably be seeing you again, and I hope to be a more involved resident and appreciate the example being set by so many of my new neighbors. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, so Patricia Donaldson? There are about six or seven other ones, so, thank you. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Potem and City Council, Patricia Donaldson, President Hawthorne Chamber. We're going to have a Halloween mixer on October 28th between 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM, $100 for the scariest costume. We want everyone to wear costumes, and $50 cash for the most original. There'll be hot dogs and drinks, but not alcohol drinks. We're also doing a maze from now until the 31st, 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM at the Hawthorne Chamber. And then, Thanksgiving, we're going to be giving out on November 22nd turkeys, 350 turkeys, hopefully, if we can get them, and like we normally do every year, and 350 bags of groceries, and that's November 22nd at 1:00 PM. And then, I'll get flyers out to everyone next week. And Christmas, December 23rd, we'll be giving out turkeys, grocery bags, and toys. bags, and toys. Another thing I'd like to mention is a lot of people have called the chamber in reference to the outside eating and seating, and everyone thinks it's a good idea. I hope that we're going to be able to keep that. And the last thing, has nothing to do with the chamber, it's me personally, but someone that two of you on the dais are endorsing, on it, it says that this gentleman that's running for city council at 13666 Hawthorne Boulevard owns a business here. And I checked with licensing, and he does not own a business in the city of Hawthorne, nor does he live in the city of Hawthorne. His parents live in Hawthorne, and someone in the city followed him home, and he lives in Long Beach. Has a criminal background that can be proven, so I'm not understanding why anyone would want to endorse this person. Thank you.
Raymond Vergara?
Good evening, Mayor, Ms. Valentine. I smell corruption and bribery. How else will three city council members willingly support the business cannabis retail to Hawthorne? Moreover, I'm embarrassed of these two ordinances that will be proposed tonight. I'm disgusted by our city leaders, especially Alex Montero, David Patterson, and Angie English.
Come talk to me in my house, you know where I live.
Ordinance 2235, excuse me, I'm talking, this is my time. Ordinance 2235 and 2236 is an insult to me and our residents.
Everybody.
I read the 22-page proposal and almost threw up. What captured my attention is the 16 dispensaries or dope houses that you want to bring to the city. 16! How can you guys be so irresponsible? Is bribery worth the risk of going to jail?
We'll talk about it after the council meeting, I'll about that.
Excuse me, I'm talking. This is my time.
Wait a minute. All right, wait, hold on, guys, hold on. No, wait, stop, stop. I need you to stop, sir. There's no, there's not, there's no aggressive talk on your end? It's no aggressive talk on this end?
I'm not being aggressive.
No, no, I'm just, I'm just-
Offering to talk to a constituent. But this is my time, sir.
Yeah, no, but like, look, sir, just try to tone down.
You're trying to address the body as a whole.
Try to tone it down, but okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Could speak.
Finish your, let's give him the-
Speak to the body as a whole.
I hope I don't be taking any more time. Thank you. So this organization is not going to vote for Alex Montero in the November 8th election. You, sir, have no moral ethics, in my opinion. How can you sit there as a CEO of a daycare center in our city and promote marijuana shops? Both ordinances have holes big enough to drive a Mac through. I will be discussing this process with the city attorney, not you, Mr. Kim, and will continue to fight against retail marijuana shops in Hawthorne. Please, citizens of Hawthorne, vote for Dr. Sanford in this November 8th election. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. So, um-
Are you sure you don't leave early?
We don't need that comment. We don't need that comment.
Would you like to talk now?
Be a professional. Be a professional, sir. Be a professional.
We have a conversation.
Be professional. City Clerk, can you please, can you please remind speakers of the public comment?
The truth is so good that he has to take a citizen on. How ridiculous is that?
Stay, cool. Stay, stay, please. All right, we're going to go into recess.
Perfect.
The city of Hawthorne has revised the Hawthorne Municipal Code 12.04.031 pertaining to sidewalk repair and maintenance. The revised code places new duties and obligations on the property owners adjacent to sidewalks in conformance with the California Streets and Highways Code. The revised municipal code section can be found online at the website shown on the screen. A copy of Section 12.04.031 is also available from the city clerk's office. Property owners are encouraged to consult their own legal counsel or insurance companies if they have questions about the legal impact of the new code section.
From recess, so just want to make sure that everybody's guaranteed their First Amendment rights, but, and you can say whatever you want, as long as it's not threatening, it's not threatening of somebody their physical harm or type of harm, but you also will be judged by the things you say in the public forum. So you just need to be very conscious as to how you present yourself and how, and how you present yourself and what you say, okay? So you're not immune from judgment from the public. So that goes for people out there, even us up here, okay? So that's that one. Recoverer?
Hi. Good afternoon. First time I've been back since I've been retired, but-
Welcome.
Good to see you, Rick.
Two important reasons I'm here. The first one's cannabis. We're against it. You guys rattle this enough, we'll be running for council and getting you guys out, all right? I don't want it in my neighborhood. There's been fires that have harmed first responders with either growing, robberies, murders. Our neighborhood has enough crime. I used to go out there, get a lot of overtime assisting the police department. We don't need any more crap here. It's ridiculous to consider it. I know the state passed a law, but there's some lines. The council needs to take the high ground. I know there's a lot of financial backers that write a lot of checks to campaigns, developers, they all want to get maximum money for their businesses. A businessperson has a different outlook as a resident. It's you at the council that needs to bring the balance. Remember, the residents are the ones that vote. Yeah, the developers back you financially, but that should not buy a vote. I've seen it go on for years, developers buying council people, and it needs to stop now. Also, your wages is kind of putting a gun to our head. We want to become a charter to prevent the state from manipulating the city, but it's wrong to tie your wages in as well. Tie it in and then let people vote on it. Because all I did here when I came back from a six-week vacation is, what in the hell's going on? I was out of touch. I didn't even care. I think everybody should be paid what's fair. I know you guys put in a lot of time, a lot of hours, after-hours, community events, and going and representing the city. I don't think you should be coming out of your own pocket to represent us, but it needs to be fair. It's not a full-time job, it's part-time. All right? Thank you for your time. I respect you all. You're all my friends, but like I said, I'll be running for council if this passes. Thank you.
Doug Chosky? Did I pronounce that correctly?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Chosky.
But I'm used to a lot of variations.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for your time, and I agree with that gentleman wholeheartedly. I just found out, my name's Doug, and I'm a resident of Hawthorne since 1985. I love the city. City of good neighbors sums it up very nicely. But I would like you folks to please think of us as good neighbors. And not pass this bill I just found out this morning about, where we're going to allow possibly 16 marijuana dispensaries. Now, why is that? Because I was lucky enough to speak before, a couple of meetings, where I did research, and the crime just leaps through the roof. There's no if, ands, or buts about it. The crime will accelerate tremendously, and it's going to hurt all of us. And then when that happens, the value of this wonderful town's going to go downhill. You guys will be representing something that is slumping, and that's going to happen. And I, for what it's worth, just as an endorsement, as I heard about it this morning, I'm walking my doggy around, I talk to seven neighbors, every single one of those neighbors, "What? They're going to do what?" And they're talking about passing the bill. So can you possibly let the city of Hawthorne citizens know that this is on the agenda? I'm home all day, I'm retired now, and I did not know this until recently. And if it happens, I think you're going to get a lot of feedback, which we've already had some feedback, from citizens in this neighborhood. And it's a wonderful city, city of good neighbors, but it's going to change. If you guys let the dispensaries take, take place, there, I lived near Inglewood Avenue, and I was telling one of my neighbors that I just told you about, and they said on Inglewood Avenue, down in Inglewood, there was a dispensary that was allowed, and within a very short period of time, all the neighborhood around them demonstrated, and it was shut down. I don't know, I didn't know anything about it, because I apologize about that, but that's one example. And, and, and so if you could just please be responsible for us, yes, it may pass, we passed a tax bill, but that's, that's, hey, taxes, that's one thing, but as far as, you know, what it's going to happen to the city, that's another thing. That's another thing. And it's going to hurt us. I, I, there's no doubt in my mind. This is, this is something that's horrible, and you will change this city tremendously if it goes through. Please don't. That's it. Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Um, I just want to make, go ahead, sir. I just want to call, make this a point, is that you guys are all commenting now? You're free to, anybody who's here to talk about the cannabis issue, we have a public hearing on that, right? We have one. So you'll be able to address the city council at the appropriate point, which is when Item 7 comes up, okay?
And to the chair?
Yes, sir.
I would encourage for you guys to stay for the public hearing, because there is already misinformation going, going on that is completely false and wrong, because I don't know why people coming up with the 16, number 16. So stay around, and, and, and because there is a lot of education that needs to be sat and learned tonight. So please stay around, do not leave after the pub oral communication, because there is a public hearing on a specific cannabis ordinance.
Yep, that's right. There's been a lot of discussion, meetings with the public on that item. So there's, there's been ample opportunities to all of you guys for contributing your ideas along the way. This is not just something that's happening today. So, okay, next person is Noemi Diaz.
Thank you for that opportunity, Mr. Alex. Okay. Well, the reason, I think I already, I had, I hope you will understand me, my English, if you know. The reason why I'm here is completely something else, but thank God, I'm glad I hear everything was going on. I've been in this neighborhood since 1974. Over here in 4337 was my first property. And the last one was over here in where I live now, 118 in Hawthorne and Ramona Boulevard. And like somebody said to me, this is was, and I've been see how it's going to sit it down, but now I know why. It's a beautiful city, but we have a problem. I come in already about two weeks ago, there is a people there throwing trash in the alleys where I, my property is, and my neighbor too, that she came with me. And the alleys, or that, that played from 118 to 116, they didn't fix it, and they have a lot of holes in there. And I noticed the other alleys from the same area, they have a different, they fixed it and everything. And I've been coming long, long ago, but I never come to this meeting until now, because they told me maybe they will listen and they do something. And that's the reason why I'm here. And another thing, I don't know how much is the speed of the cars that they drive in our street, but they go in such a big, big speed that I'm scared some day they might kill somebody there. And that's my problem that I have, that I came to you, especially to you, all of you, that you can do something. And that's my two major thing, that they have about the graffiti. I'm so happy that I see that they go, go, but about the people throwing trash in there, in the alleys where I live. I hope that they can do something about that and leave it like the other alleys of the street, because I've been living there almost for 40 years and that's all.
Ms. Noemi?
Yes.
If you could talk to our city manager, and you give him the information, the location, and- and-
Okay.
The location?
Okay, you say 11723?
Okay, just give it to him. He'll write it, he'll write it down. Ms. Laura Solis? Is this the same person? You could, you could, you could speak again if you want and add anything to it.
Something else about your trees? About the trees?
Go ahead, ma'am, just, it's your time.
Okay. It's the same, it's the same question as for the street, 11750 Ramona. It's the same people that the tree is a, it's a lot of, the, the street is, is broken. Some people just throw away, that's why. It's, it's the same place though they are, they are, on Noemi Garcia, that's why.
What's going on, Mr. City Manager? Okay, everything's good. Todo perfecto. Gracias. All right. Anyone else wishing to address the city council? Line up, form a line right there.
Who are you? Good evening. Ruben Sanchez, North Hawthorne Community Association. Right now I had a meeting, I was at the park with a group of residents. We're having big issues right now with the parking crisis, as you guys know. We have issues with the airport. We have issues with the marijuana dispensaries. Yes, it's six, I believe. Somebody was saying it's 16 or something like that, but you know how it goes. It's six that you guys want to bring in. We already sent in the letter in regards on how all of you are going to be working together. All of you are going to be working together when it comes to reducing taxes for these dispensaries behind closed doors. Okay? That's where the corruption comes in, everyone. It's in the tax. It's not about if weed is good, if weed is going to help you, if weed is going to, medical marijuana. It's not that discussion. This comes about the taxes because these dispensaries are coming in, they're coming in strong with a lot of money, and it's going to flip our city upside down. And if you think you're going to turn around and talk to the council members, whoever comes in new or whomever, it doesn't matter anymore. You guys need to wake up right now. These people are already right here, oh yeah, you better believe it. You better believe it. They're going to be looking the other way. And I'm talking to all the residents right now. It is very shameful with this whole situation with the, especially with the elections, the endorsements, all this stuff. It's like you see where everything is going with too. But the taxes is where the money is, okay? Because right there, they revised, they revised the paperwork for this, for the vote, the last vote, and then the revision, it tells you there that they don't have to put it on the ballot if they're going to reduce the taxes for all these marijuana dispensaries. They tell you this? Did these people tell you that they can just go behind closed doors and reduce it to zero as long as they get their donations? Huh? That's where the money's at. It's in the tax. Meanwhile, we're over here talking about, hey, you know marijuana, help my grandma, help my auntie, you know? It doesn't matter. It's all in the tax. They're going to pay big money to reduce those taxes to zero. Hey, this came from Gavin Newsom, to be honest. I don't really listen to that guy, but this time he made sense. He said something about that the only ones that profit from this is the black market. And guess what? All that El Segundo where all these breweries are, ah, they're not going to last. You guys, you guys think that those breweries are going to stick around when there's drive-by shootings over there because of turf wars? No, that's not going to happen. But yet these people are going to be like, oh, it's for the money. We're here going to get good money. We're going to get a lot of good money for the school. That's what we're going to be listening to all this time. That's what you guys been listening to. Is it shameful? It's also shameful with the police department, the union especially, for endorsing people that know they're going to be endorsing and helping and supporting these dispensaries. You know, they don't want to talk, the police never want to talk about, the union never wants to talk about politics, but yet they sure endorse politicians. Talk to the public about politics. Let's talk, let's talk. The police union, talk to me about politics. And then you can say now that you're representing the residents. Where's the union with the police department? I want to speak to them. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Okay. Next person?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ryan Richard, resident of Holly Park Neighborhood Association. I had a couple of things I was going to say, and first thing I want to say is I did come up here with the intention of speaking about cannabis, but there was something very important said that I think everyone in the room should hear. There is a reading of the ordinance, and before you stop and make an opinion about something, hearing a 10-second blur from a couple of people who come up here and have a personal opinion, maybe you should listen to the full text of the, of the actual ordinance and then make your decision. Something that we all have a right to do is get full information before we make a decision, and that's very important. I think it's a big thing for everyone here in this room to do. Don't take that opinion based off something that someone else has said to you. Listen to it and form your own opinion. So with that being said, I'm going to reserve my comments for that point. I'd like to say I appreciate all of you for being here and doing this important work to actually spend the time and look through what the actual possibilities of making something like this happen in the city is. It's hard work. You get a lot of what just happened today, and I respect all of you for sitting here and going through it. One point that I did specifically want to make is that I've come here numerous times and listened to these kind of public comments happen, and there's something that's usually said that was not stated today. Comments are specifically made to the body and not to individual council people. Today that was not done, and unfortunately, things got out of hand. We as a city, I do personally believe that we should be able to conduct our meetings under Robert's Rules of Order, seeing as many organizations do that. It's very, it's easier to keep your meetings in control, and I appreciate you all for maintaining a level of decorum throughout this proceeding, and I will be here to hear the rest of the reading. Thank you all.
All right. So anybody else? Anybody else? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Kyle Orleman. And first of all, I would like to welcome Faye Johnson to the Veterans Affairs Commission. Look very, very much forward to having her join us. And I would like to make a request, and this is a real simple one, nothing controversial whatsoever. The reason I was a few minutes late getting into the meeting is because I couldn't find parking. And a few years ago, it used to be on city council meeting nights, excuse me, let me take this off so you can understand me better. It used to be on city council nights that the gate at the end of the public parking lot was open so that people from the public could park in the staff lot after the staff people went home. That would be very, very helpful if you could do it again. It's an easy solution, and that way we wouldn't have to be parking on the streets in the neighborhood where it feels a little bit less safe to leave your car. So that's a simple one. The complicated one is addressing item number 11 on the Bridge Housing Project. And as you know, I've been very involved in the situation up at the West LA VA, and there's over 180 of the tiny home units there. I just spent two days going through 16 hours of briefings pertaining to a number of issues, including the tiny homes. I have the reports with me here, and I think it would be advantageous for the city people who are working on this project to take a look at what's happened in West LA. They've had 180 of those units up for about a year now. There are issues with, with the coordinated reentry program. As you know, from the news, there was a fire there that was started, that went through over 20 of the tiny homes, and that fire was started as a result of one of the residents plugging in an electric bike into a facility that wasn't handled, or wasn't sufficient to handle it, and ended up with over 20 of the tiny homes that were burned, and it could have been a disaster. So I'm not saying that I have answers to this project because I haven't seen the plans for it, but I'm saying we've been watching it happen up here for the past year, and there might be some information in this report that you would find helpful in moving forward with the project that you're planning under item number 11. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? If not, are you speaking? We need people to line up. If you're going to speak, ma'am, we need you to line up right there. Are you going to speak, ma'am, over there? Go ahead. So we can have an indication as to how long the oral communication line is. Thank you.
I'm not sure what line item it is. Thanks for letting me speak, by the way.
Can you speak into the microphone so we can hear you next and clear, please?
Yes. My name is Shawn Anderson. I'm going to talk about short-term rentals and how I feel that if you allow short-term rentals, it can benefit with having it taxed, and you can use it, the taxes maybe towards like homeless situations or something like that, and just, as well as I looked up a couple of cities that, that does allow it. Example, Atlanta, they charge a $150 annual fee and $300 for violation and an 8% tax. So I was thinking maybe we can follow something like that in regards to short-term rentals. So that's all I have to say in regards to that. Thanks for hearing me.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right. If there's no one further, I declare oral communication closed ordered. All right, let's move on. City Clerk's consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I have five items on the consent calendar. They are items two through six for your consideration and approval. Item two, approval of waiver of full readings of resolutions and on ordinances on tonight's agenda. Item three, approval of city council minutes for the special meeting of September 20th, 2022, and the regular meeting of September 27th, 2022. Item four, city treasurer requests approval of the warrants for October 25th, 2022. Item five, resolution 8380, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing approving and ratifying the acceptance of the fiscal year 2022, 2023 staff, State of California Office of Traffic Safety Selective Traffic Enforcement Program, STEP, grant number PT23039. Item six, resolution number 8381, a resolution of the city council of the city of Hawthorne, California, authorizing approving and ratifying the acceptance of the fiscal year 2022, 2023, State of California Office of Traffic Safety Ride to Live Motorcycle Education Grant, grant number MC23002 for adoption.
I move.
Second.
I'd like to pull five and six for a discussion. Like discussion.
You can speak before, but there's a, I'm not, I can't pull at this point, so go ahead and speak on those.
Okay. So on the, the traffic safety grant, I want to thank Chief Ishi and the Hawthorne Police Department for applying for and receiving the STEP grant and the Ride to Live Motorcycle Education Grant, which will provide funding for traffic-related enforcement operations, allowing the ability to staff traffic-related operations with the necessary officers and conduct these traffic operations continually throughout the year. These are extremely important programs. In addition, the Hawthorne Police Department proactively fosters educational campaigns to enhance community safety through such programs as Ride to Live. I want to thank you, and the community will be much safer as a result of this.
To the chair?
Yes.
Yeah, I would like to echo that. Looks like the police department has secured $185,000 to provide a lot of different programs for the community to increase, you know, safety on the roads, and, you know, I definitely look forward to it. But yeah, just want to commend you for your hard work.
Okay. All right. Was that it? I thought you said you had two.
No, there were two grants, so I was, it was five and six.
I thought there was two items.
Five and six.
Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and city council voting yes. That concludes my consent calendar, Mr. Mayor.
All right. So just again, we have a public hearing, and this is on the cannabis issue, and this is a culmination of discussions that have happened probably for about a year even. Can we say about how long, Mr. City Attorney?
The process since the passage of measure CC took about a year. We had several town hall meetings. We formed a working committee. The city hired a cannabis consultant, and we've had study sessions with city council. So there's been, all of these meetings have been noticed and agendized. The Brown Act was followed. They were on the city website. So this should not come as a surprise. It's been going on with a series of meetings, so.
Okay.
Been about a year.
It's been a series of meetings, and I only say that because I just, the whole council, whether whatever diverging opinions or different opinions or similar opinions, it's been a conversation that's been had over the, a year. There's been very many points of reflection that members of our community could have had. It could have been when the election, when people voted to legalize marijuana. It could have been at the point where a tax was proposed, and it could have been at any of the, well, how many meetings do we have? Community meetings?
We, the town hall meetings, there were four.
About four town hall meetings that were had, and apart from that, the city council meetings that we've had here where this has been discussed. So there's been many opportunities. So if anybody's trying to represent this as a surprise, something that's happening last minute.
And the cannabis working committee meetings, right?
Led by yourself, so thank you. So it's not a surprise, and we would have loved to have heard earlier at any of those points from people in the community, so. I mean, we're listening to you now, but, I mean, I think, there's a word called apathy, you know, you pay, don't pay attention, you know, read, you don't get involved, and things like this happen if you're really, really, really opposed to certain things. So we need community to get involved, and hopefully this will be a point that if you don't like the way it turns out, or you do, you keep coming and talking about things just like Mr. Gemlick. Mr. Gemlick, right? Who's reading the agenda, so. Madam Clerk?
Item seven, now is the time and place for a public hearing and introduction of ordinance number 2235, public hearing before the introduction for public comments and enacting chapter 5.100, Commercial Cannabis Business, to Title V, Business Regulation and Licenses, Division II, Businesses Regulated. City Attorney Department's declaration publication filed, no written communications were received.
So now is your opportunity, even though you spoke in oral communication, this is the appropriate point at which people from the audience can speak about the cannabis issue, so it could be entered into the record right next to the actual item itself. Is there anybody wishing to speak on this item? Just line up, sir. Go ahead. Thank you.
Thanks again. Thanks again for the opportunity. So I'm officially being heard now, so thank you. Again, any number of dispensaries that would be allowed in Hawthorne is going to, is going to make us less of a good city, whether it's one or 16, like I heard. It doesn't make any difference. The proof is in the pudding. If you look at any of the marijuana dispensaries anywhere, I've talked to, I actually got to meet a supplier of dispensaries that goes up and down California, and he was telling me, he says, as soon as recreational marijuana is allowed, he says he's surprised, and he makes a living doing this. I just don't want this city to go down. I want, and I know there's, there's got to be some other issues that you're considering, but if you look at what the effects are of a marijuana dispensary, it's negative. It's negative. And, and, and just look at the one that was on Inglewood Avenue on the LA city county, on the LA city county side, down towards Torrance. It was, they were in the news all the time for bad stuff, and that was just one marijuana dispensary. So thank you again for your time. I just want to be on the record as saying I wish the people, and again, it was brought up that we're supposed to know about these meetings and things like that. I don't even know where, how to find out about the meetings. Most of it's verbal, and I've, I went online today, and I didn't see anything that was real explicit, so if, if it could be publicized a little bit more so more of us could get involved, I, I think you'd be shocked at what, what the feelings are, because like I mentioned, I talked to only seven people, and every single one of them says, no, I don't want this in Hawthorne. All right, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate your feedback. Go ahead, sir. Next person? Mr. Richards?
With no S, thanks, Chris. Yeah, last name is Richard. There's just no S. I've known you for a long time, Alex. Again, here, first off, I just wanted to start with a question. I appreciate the fact that we do have the public forum. I do, would like to suggest that in the future, public forum or public comment go after a reading so the public could have a chance to have heard and then make informed comments afterwards, just thought. I would also like to say I appreciate the fact that you guys did have these, these working committees. I personally have watched numerous- I personally have watched numerous numbers of the working committee meetings, I've attended two of the workshops. I actually came out and provided a suggestion for what I would like to see in the ordinance and I appreciate the fact the city council has been very receptive and responsive to the things that they're saying here. Um, I would just like to, for clarification, point out to individuals, I see a lot of misinformation or just misplaced fear about some things that are coming up with these cannabis shops. A lot of the cannabis dispensaries that we're discussing are dispensaries that exist in unincorporated L.A. and are thus not regulated. And what we're doing here is moving towards a space of regulating these dispensaries, kind of like cities that you see, i.e. Beverly Hills or other, other affluent cities that have already allowed marijuana in their city. I also think there's an over, that over-focus on the fact that we're discussing dispensaries. In the ordinance, the idea of allowing marijuana here, we discuss testing sites which have no retail purposes, which does, at that point, does not encourage that kind of a criminal element that people seem to be overhyping here. You can simply have that and it still allows us to access the tax money that comes from cities that do and have enacted some sort of marijuana legislation there. Again, as we continue to talk about building hotels and building things that are keeping people to stay here in Hawthorne, spend money in Hawthorne and thus overall build this tax revenue base, we have discussed the fact that we don't have, one of the things that was most popular about this ordinance that passed at Beverly Hills was something like a Loos Cafe, cafes that actually did dual-service things. They served, I want to infuse food, but they also had food for those individuals who did not enjoy that kind of space. That's a, that's a, a vacuum of a market that's around this area. Right now, we don't have anything that's like that. It's an easy way to say, we have a restaurant that's one of a kind and there's a reason to stick around in Hawthorne. That actually has not, next to nothing to do with cannabis. So I would just like to say, again, I hope people would stay, listen to the ordinance and keep in mind about what it is that's going forward. And at the end of the day, if you don't appreciate it, you don't like it, you always have the opportunity to say no, but at least we're here to hear about it and I appreciate you guys, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carver? Thank you, Mr. Ryan Richard.
Good afternoon again. Um, I don't think we should have to go to a hundred meetings to say no. I appreciate your comment, but sometimes we beat up things with meetings and committees. When the public says no, it means no. I know the majority rules, but I know everybody elected for it. But how many of you know that we've already had a dispensary delivery driver killed in Hawthorne? North Hawthorne, it was Sundale and about one nineteenth. Got a call that there was an odor when people got out of church. There's a little liquor store there and there was a guy stabbed in the backseat of his truck and his body fluid was running out. So, don't say there's no violence, there is violence of a guy just doing his job, right? Is it fair to his family? Is it fair to the churchgoers to smell this stuff or dumping a body in our city? It's wrong. There is violence and to minimize it is ridiculous. Thanks again.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
I just have a question. Um, Kyle Orleman, again. A number of years ago, we had a mayor here who was very much in favor of bringing marijuana into this city and there was a great deal of discussion during the time that that man was in the center seat. We also know, those of us who lived here long enough, that the city suffered catastrophic financial damage as a result of that particular administration. I would like to know from those of you who are up here and are making the decision on this, if that individual is involved in any way, shape or form with what you're talking about bringing into the city and if that has been considered. That's my question. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, oral communications or is uh ordered closed? Okay. So uh, this is the first reading of a draft that was prepared by staff uh with the assistance of E J M A Consulting Group, is that correct? Just simple yes or no?
That's correct. Um, we've been working on this for a while, uh, we went through several revisions. We started with the West Hollywood ordinance as a model and then we had to tighten up the ordinance quite a bit. That took us um some time, but um it's the work of the staff and the consultants on this matter.
Sounds good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Ebony J. McGee Anderson with E J M A Planning. I just wanted to make a couple of um comments regarding the ordinance that I think would help focus our discussion today a bit. Um, we are proposing six retailers, that's on the, um, in the ordinance today. Um, again, this ordinance that you see before you is for biz, will go in our business code. So it doesn't address some of the things um that I know that we've talked about in the working group regarding zoning um and and those types of things will come later um in a, in a zoning text amendment. Um, but I just quickly wanted to go over some of the highlights um and to address some of the concerns that we've heard tonight. For example, who can and cannot apply. The ordinance does speak to members of the, current and past members of the city council not being eligible to apply for licenses, so that is something that is in here. Um, the, the process will be similar to what we have discussed many times during our working group committee. Um, we will put out all of the rules and regulations for applying. Applicants will have thirty days under our current ordinance proposal to apply and complete all of the necessary paperwork. Staff will then review those applications for completeness determination as well as zoning and other um elements that are outlined some in the ordinance. And then ultimately, it will go on to a committee, I'm sorry, a scoring panel made up of city staff that would be reviewing these for final um, final recommendation for approval. So I just wanted to kind of outline that process so that it's clear. I know the ordinance is pretty lengthy, so um some of the members of the or residents may not have been able to read it in its entirety. So I thought that it would be a good idea that we just give you kind of an overview of what we're looking at in addition to what we've discussed in our numerous working group meetings.
And if I may, through the chair.
Go ahead.
Um, to address some of the questions that's been raised, this wasn't triggered by any previous mayor or councilman or anything to that effect. What triggered this is a ballot measure that was passed in November of twenty twenty. It was measure CC. And that asked for whether the residents wanted a tax, retail tax for cannabis business. And that passed overwhelmingly, that was about sixty-seven approval that came in. And that led to the year where the council directed staff to look into forming a committee and and looking into possible cannabis business, because you had a measure that was passed overwhelmingly. And the council took next step, which is to start the cannabis business and look into it so that a tax can be assessed. Um, it led to a year of, of uh community involvement, we asked for comments, um, it, it, then the consultants were hired and tonight is not, we're not here to either approve the ordinance or take a vote on that, that's for the next council meeting. The reason why uh we did a public hearing today is to get public comments, but also for the council to look through the ordinance and come up with something for introduction to vote on. Because we need a clear ordinance agreed by the council in order to, for them to vote when it comes back on November eighth meeting.
Okay. So. Through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead. I just wanted to make, get clarity, it would come back if something was approved today, move forward. It would come back on November eighth?
Well, it's for introduction is what, what's being, today is the public hearing, the purpose is the introduction. So if we come to an agreement of what the ordinance should be, for instance, um, the number of, of, of retail dispensaries, that can be discussed between the council and decided upon the number itself. You can, the staff is, uh, draft ordinance is six retail dispensaries. But, you know, the council can discuss and agree that it should be lower number or higher number, however you want to do it. As long as there's a consensus, then it comes back for an adoption at the next council meeting where you, the council would vote to approve. Okay, so we just need a final version for uh for this adoption for the next council meeting.
Thank you. Through the chair.
Thank you. Let just me say again, back in two thousand sixteen, this, the Hawthorne resident vote about close to fifty-nine percent to legalize marijuana with the State of California. The people of Hawthorne voted almost seventy percent to legalize marijuana. And then we did this tax ordinance that was put on the ballot that Mr. Kim just mentioned. And again, we got almost seventy percent of the vote to say yes. So it's not this council that ju- that initiate this idea about bringing some legal dispensary in the city of Hawthorne. Let me address some of the dispensary that has been open on non-incorporated area of the city of Hawthorne that belongs to L.A. County. Because we are surrounded by non-incorporated areas. Del Air, Wiseburn, north of the uh, right there on One Thirty-Fifth, Yukon and Crenshaw, all non-incorporated areas. And then, of course, Lanex is non-incorporated area. The L.A. County is going to give licensing to open dispensary right here in our backyard, across the street from your Inglewood. One side is Hawthorne, one side is non-incorporated area. And you have seen many dispensaries have opened in Hawthorne and they had been open and close, open and close. Our police department has to go there and perform a job to close them down. And then the next day, they go to another place and then reopen, or wait for another month, they reopen again. We are spending our, your tax dollar from our general fund for our police department to go do that work. And then we do not get, have a dime back through our coffers. So we already performing some type of safety and risky issues without no compensation. The State of California also is contemplating release some of that money that they have received through tax, cannabis tax. According to the state, they have about two billion dollars. And they're only going to give to the cities that has cannabis's program. Again, our police department in our city will get nothing. But we're going to be closing and opening these shops because they are illegal shop. But in a few months, the county of Los Angeles is going to give them permission. So, I told people right after a morning last week, it's about economics. I'm against drugs, I don't smoke, I don't, you know. I used to be on the school board for twelve years and I always said, zone free, no drugs, no, no alcohol, no drug, no nothing. And like the gentleman said, I have a preschool, yes. But I don't preach drugs, but it's about economic, it's about Hawthorne. Because if we do not create business, innovative business and progress in this city, we're gonna be asking you to raise your tax again to provide service for the police, firefight, public works, streets. And then, but our staff have to do the job for free for other people to get benefit like L.A. County and some other folks. And then we don't have a dime to show for it. That is unconsciously. And when I was elected, it was to bring some type of dignity and respect to the city and make sure that your tax dollar is well-spended. And to bring business that would help us be prosper and a much better city. And that is what I'm doing. I'm all there lobbying for this city every single day, for hotels, for new business, for restaurants, for technology business, for manuf- manufacturing business. Last week, the city manager and myself and Ms. Valentine and some of our staff went to this economic forum. And one of the businesses that they talked was about cannabis. That is, there is a future in this business, but there is challenge. And the challenge is for the cities like us to step up and create a program that is going to be secure, safe, tested, instead of being an illegal drug out there that people can go buy that is, is a chemical or have some type of pesticide have not been tested, that has not been secured for people to consume. Some of, my constituents have talked about, oh, uh, they're gonna sell to kids, no. They says twenty-one. You, some of you remember your parents told you about prohibition, alcohol, it was illegal. But then what happened? People were still buying alcohol underground, but then they legalize it. So dispensary, if we do it right, with all the safety component, it will benefit our city and for those of you live in this city. Because we'll have revenue that will fix your potholes, it would fit, fix our infrastructure. Because remember, federal dollar, COVID dollar, all has been, is gone. We have to survive. And if you want a city that's going to use your tax dollar well, but we need to bring more revenue, because look, city of Hawthorne survive on property tax, sales tax and T O T that is transient oriented, a tax that from the hotels, three things. And if we not create no more business, we cannot give salary increase to the police department, to our staff. And we'll be struggling to have competitive employees in our city. And I have to tell you, I have not received no money from, from cannabis investors or other developer there. But just because I'm for reelection doesn't mean that I'm going to put my values and my moral down. Like I said, if you guys don't like what I'm doing, vote me out and I will go with grace. I'll go with my head high, because I have nothing to hide. I've been here in this city for twenty-five years, I've been a homeowner for twenty years. I have business in this city. I have built school-based clinic, I have built preschool, I have built low-income housing for the, for the people, because I care about this city. It's not my, about my pocketbook and I'm not a corrupt politician, I would never be. But this cannabis is about economics and this is my thing. I believe we should reduce the number of dispensary, I don't like the six. Maybe four and one equity or three and one equity, a total of four. To go back to that six hundred feet from schools, parks, another daycare business. And.
What? Six hundred?
Six hundred feet, instead of five hundred. And when the staff and the committee reviewed those applicant and after you scored them, all of those that have qualified, or if it's two, four, five, ten, I would like to see a lottery like you, like we do for the fireworks, right here, this place. All the applicants who had qualified and scored well will go on that barrel and we will rotate and pick up the four in the eye of the public. There will be no, like somebody said, back deals, no, there will be no back deals. And the tax, no, nobody's going to go close door and reduce the tax, no, that's not gonna happen. My watch will not have, never happen. And I don't think it will happen, because you would have to go back to the people to vote, because you voted. So. it's unfortunately that people sometimes come here without knowing the total facts. But I could continue to say, please, do your homework, get the facts. And we, you know, my cellular phone is on, my business card is on the website. Call me if you have issue. I will explain to you why, my position. And I say, I love this city. Elected or re-elected or not, I'm going to continue to do what I've been doing for thirty-eight years since I came to California. So that's my thing, Mr. Mayor. The reduce the number of dispensary, increase the firefight to six hundred feet, and the lottery must happen in front of everybody, public.
Lottery after what point?
After the committee decide, okay, let's say we got twenty applicants, and then they scored that ten applicant qualify based on the criteria they have submitted, right? And after those ten, they bring here, we'll put them on the barrel and lottery, and we pick for, like we do for the firework. Remember? Firework, like they have eight floor, but sometimes they can get twelve applicant, and then all those go inside that barrel, and whoever comes up.
We'll have to identify what that mark is to qualify to go in the barrel.
So
I think Eijama has a plan.
Can you discuss, can you discuss the selection process as is? Because this is something
Sure, Mr. Mayor. So the way that it is, the selection process happens now is based on a ranking system. So based on the panel's overall scores for the applicants, they would be ranked in the seats
Who's on the panel?
That are available. City staff, department heads, I believe it's seven department heads. So if we allow, let's say you wanted to go down to four or five licenses, there would be four or five top applicants selected. There wouldn't be additional applicants for said raffle unless we did something that, as you mentioned, would be a qualifying score. For example, if we had a score of ninety points or higher, everybody in that pool of ninety points or higher would, and again, these are random numbers, our point system doesn't look like this, but assuming that we had a hundred points, ninety or higher gets you into the raffle. That would satisfy Councilman Montero's raffle slash lottery system. Right now, we don't have that. We actually have it based on the top ranking applicants. So those with the highest scores would be selected. And the reason why we went with the highest scoring applicants is so that we have the best performing applicants in the city.
Through the chair.
Go ahead. The reason that I want a lottery is because even, you know, I have a hundred and twenty percent confidence on our staff, on our head department. But I don't want nobody to come back and say, so and so and so put pressure on this individual to choose A, B, C instead of, you know. So to me, to be completely transparent and to allow, and even to prevent lawsuits in the future, I would say those who qualified in some specific scores, if they, you know, ninety-five to one hundred percent, should be going to that barrel. And then from there will be, and then whatever comes out of there, it would be going through the process of going to get a licensing for cannabis dispensary.
Right. So, yeah, I want to give everybody a chance to speak. I heard your comments. I would be in favor of reducing the numbers to three and one and increasing the distances to six hundred feet, but I would like to retain the ranking system. I think we have a great group of individuals here that, I mean, it's already, almost assuming that they're going to be biased, and I think that's, I wouldn't, we say we defend our, that we have a great group of employees here, but we can't trust them to do something that would be, that depends on full honesty and integrity. So I would like to stick to the ranking system, but three and one, six hundred feet, and if the council would like to consider eliminating the recreational without retail. So I know you were going to speak, ma'am.
Hi, Ebony.
Hi.
Let me take this off.
And I also want to thank Councilwoman Angie Reyes English for the great job she did, chairing that committee. There was a lot of time that she took out, and thank you ladies also for Eijama. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So Ebony, in our discussions with regards to the revenue, potential revenue, that some of these numbers that we were looking at on a number of fronts, from retail to cultivation to manufacturing, to delivery, transport, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So dealing with the retail at this point, there was a number that was provided to us with regards to five dispensaries, one social equity.
Correct.
And the number of potential dollars for Hawthorne were in the millions.
Tens of millions, but yes.
Tens of millions. And even in the application process, taking the applications and paying your monies at ten thousand, twelve thousand per applicant
Correct.
Without a guarantee of being selected was even high. Because, again, everyone is doing this. Lots of cities are even Redondo Beach, Beverly Hills, I mean, places that we would have thought would be a no, no, no are now yes, 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 because it's everywhere.
Correct.
So having said that, what would be, what can we, how can we calculate dropping, going down? Because initially, the purpose of this whole ordinance was to make revenue for the city, forecasting ahead, to be able to secure not just, you know, jobs and policing, but it could go on and on, including community benefits, where nonprofit organizations and those alike are receiving a benefit by, I wouldn't say supporting cannabis, but knowing that there is a business that has such an abundance of money that they have to, in a sense, be able to give it somewhere, right?
Right. So we did an economic model, basically, is I think what we're talking about, how to fund this program and be full cost recovery. I think we've talked about that quite a bit throughout our journey with cannabis. So we did, we did initially suggest six retailers, and we use six because we have six square miles. So assuming that if we had one per square mile, which is some of the same formulas that other cities are using.
And population.
And population density, that sort of thing. So we initially started with six. Five of them would be our general retailers, and one would be in our social equity program, which we have outlined, and I don't think that we've talked much about that today, but it's very unique to the city of Hawthorne. I think we've done a really great job through the working committee and working with the Hawthorne Police Department and our planning department with really narrowing down this particular program for city of Hawthorne residents. So it gives long-term and longstanding residents in this particular city an opportunity to get in on cannabis business, and that is very unique to Hawthorne. So I want to point that out because we don't see that happening throughout the state. But one of those economic initiatives, obviously being retail, is also, I think it came up just a while ago about grants at the state. The state is offering grants to encourage cities to include retail. So I know one of the discussions we had early on was to maybe not have any retail at all. But the state is actually encouraging cities to do retail by offering back some of this cannabis revenue that's generated. And that's one of the things that we have talked about, is filing for that grant if we allow a certain number of retail. So it's really important that we look at this, not only from an economic standpoint from the city and how it can benefit taxes long-term, but we also need to think about how we recoup the costs of initiating this program. So having five or six retailers also increases the pool of applicants you're going to get.
Exactly.
So if you're reducing the number of applications, you are now reducing the chances of high-quality applicants coming in. We now see some of your surrounding sister cities already coming on board. We see a ballot measure already for LA County coming on board with their tax initiative. So it is really important that we keep our, we want to keep our opportunities in the city open so that we ensure that we get those high-quality applicants that the city is looking for. We did do a merit-based program. So with the exception of the social equity program that allows one licensee to be within the city and do a startup business, we are expecting these retailers to have a longstanding history of retail, possibly multi-state operators that are going to be bringing in fifty, eighty million dollars a year. So it's really important that we not only think about our future revenues, but also our full cost recovery program.
Thank you for that explanation, and that's where I was leading up to with regards to the potential revenue. Not trying to cut ourselves short with regards to those potential applicants going to other cities that are going to be accepting more than we would, right?
Right.
The other concern I had was with regards to, if you remember, anything having to do with lounge or things like this, which, you know, that, I mean, you'd be surprised for those that don't know, there's, you know, restaurants, there's cafes, there's, you know, lounges. These are the types of businesses that are popping up. I'm not saying that this is something that Hawthorne is trying to do. We need to start looking at what we've been working on for over a year, and that's addressing the voters' will to implement cannabis businesses in Hawthorne, which is retail-driven, which is revenue-driven. Again, that's my focus. Now, social equity is businesses that are trying to get into the market and being able to have an opportunity to start a business in around cannabis. However, LA County that surrounds us and is literally already in our backyard is allowing social equity throughout counties. So I'm a little hesitant to include a social equity in our six, just because LA County's already implementing it, and we already have issues along Inglewood Avenue where they literally sit across the street from us. If there's a potential to maybe do the six at retail and forego the social equity, but I would also, you know, I'm not hesitant to say five with one with social equity, knowing that these individuals that are applying, it's their money. It's not a guarantee that they're going to get a license, and that's what everyone needs to understand. It's the opportunity. And mind you, they're not going to be lost for that. They will go on to the next city that is opening cannabis business in their city. But I just wanted to get, you know, the council's thoughts on a proposal, however, not trying to change it up too much for the simple fact that we worked on this so hard, and there's so much opportunity. And if we're not going to be, in a sense, moving forward with what we discussed and ultimately had assistance with from various departments, including the police department, and then what are we trying to do?
Okay, so I'm going to Through the chair. I'm going to give the floor to Councilwoman Valentine. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So these are some of the thoughts that I had. I agree, first of all, with Councilman Montero about having four as opposed to six retail establishments. But also, I don't like the idea of having consumption without retail. I would be willing to have consumption with retail in all the four, but not have parlors where you have consumption without retail. I think it's a bad idea because you don't know what product people are using in a consumption parlor, if they're, you don't know what they're using or where it was obtained. There's no, there's no way to enforce that. Whereas if consumption is connected with retail, you could in some sense say that whatever consumption is done in that place was also purchased in that place. So that's my thought about that. I would like to see site control at the time of the application, so as opposed to site control after the application. So in other words, because I know that there was a lawsuit that was instituted, and I'm not sure, I mean, obviously, there was some issue because it was against the city of Corona. And obviously, there was some issue because they, there was no site control at the time of the application, and the applicant was, the applicant was reranked at a lower level afterwards, and they were not able to obtain site control of the same place that was in the application. So their ranking was lowered, and as a result of that, they filed a lawsuit, and that was AAR Corona versus City of Corona in Riverside. Now, there, it may be perfectly fine, and we may not be buying a lawsuit, but I think it's an issue that needs to be discussed, whether or not we should require site control at the time of the application. I think we should, and that's something I think we need to nail down. So no consumption without retail, and what else did I want to say? What did it mean in the application where you had no limits on something, on, I think it was on page two of the agenda bill, no limits on cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and testing?
That means that we don't have those, that application process is slightly different than our retail application process, since there isn't a cap on the number of licenses. So we're pretty much letting the real estate market determine the cap there based on the availability of real estate that would meet the needs of those businesses. We're only putting a cap on retail businesses, the most competitive and merit-based and driven part of the process.
So you're saying it could be any, it could be any number of cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, and testing sites?
It could be any number of those sites.
Okay, I wouldn't want to see, I would want to see a cap on that. I think we, I think there should be a cap. This is a very small city, and I don't think we should, you know, I think there should be a very distinct place, place in which cultivation, manufacturing, distribution, testing could be located.
There are places, and they are restricted by some of the same setbacks, but also by zone. So we did take a look at the available real estate in the zones that you have, and while you do have some vacancy and availability, putting a cap on it would make your real estate market be extremely competitive, and we would see a lot of the things that we've seen in other cities where your lease rates are skyrocketing, and then it's going to prevent other businesses from coming in. So in order to prevent that, those market conditions, we left it open. And it'll be, the licenses will be issued based on whether or not they meet the requirements of the ordinance, as well as the ordinance, the zoning ordinance, as well as the business ordinance requirements, like any other non, and remember, these are non-customer-facing businesses. So it'd be any other warehouse use that you would have.
But if you don't put a cap on it, then someone who isn't selected would, you run the risk that someone who isn't selected would sue based on the fact that they thought they should have been selected, and you put a cap on it, and they didn't make the, they didn't make the cut.
But there is no cap, so they aren't selected. It's just like any other business license. If you come in and say, I want to do a logistics business, or a warehousing business, or a distribution business, you go through the same licensing process, whether you're distributing cannabis or body lotion.
But I'm, what I'm saying, though, is that if you don't put a cap on it, anyone who comes in is going to think that they have a right, if they meet the qualifications, they're going to feel that they have a right to have a site. And if you don't give them a site, then they'll feel, then you may well face a lawsuit because they feel that they were unfairly left out.
Right, but it wouldn't be discretionary. So it would be just like any other business license process. If you came in and said, I have If you came in and said, "I have a building, I meet the requirements, and I wanna do distribution," you would get a business license.
But if I, if I may interject there, the, the manufacturing, testing, and cultivation would be limited to the industrial area, and, and Hawthorne has a very limited industrial area available right now, and the rates are still pretty high. In terms of no cap, it, it's, I think the difficulty with these industries is, will be securing a location, and there, there's no storefront. So this will be basically an enclosed factory or warehouse where we have specific rules that the ordinance specifies that there should be no order or anything that comes out that permeates from the location. So I, I think the, because the, um, the zoning, which is a separate matter, there'd be zone tax amendment that has to go through Planning Commission, this is one part of the cannabis ordinance, is the business license part. The fact that, I, I know it sounds kind of, um, I guess, allowing no, no limit, no cap on the number of these kind of, uh, business of, in the industrial area, it sounds like there's gonna be a whole bunch of people coming in, but I, I don't think that will be the case because of the limited number of space availability in City of Hawthorne, which the consultants have already analyzed.
Okay.
And also, I just wanna bring up too, our retail process also includes a conditional use permit. So we have our business regulations for those operators that, for all operators, whether it's cannabis or not, right? You have to get a business license in the City of Hawthorne because you all have voted on a 5% tax, there has to be a process for us to secure that tax, and we do that through a business license. However, those top-scoring retailers still have to go through a conditional use permit process as we have proposed the process right now, which, which makes sense because they're gonna be, they're gonna have design standards, and they're gonna have landscaping, and different things that would, um, be, be part of any other conditional use process or retail establishment or bar. But a warehouse, there's already anticipation of those type of uses in your general plan and in your zoning ordinance for warehousing uses, and then we also have specific business regulations for things like cultivation, as, as the city attorney pointed out, for odor control and things like that.
Okay, and then, um, the hours of operation, 6:00 AM to, should, I think the hours of operation should be 6:00 AM to 10:00 PM. I would not be in favor of 2:00 AM, 6:00 AM to 10, to 2:00 AM, as you have requested in some of the, um...
Are you, are you talking about the consumption?
Yes.
For the consumption portions?
Yes.
So that actually was a recommendation by the police department because the police department said that they're already patrolling at that time for bars, and so it would be less resources for them to be able to co-patrol and look for both, any, any other type of recreational uses, like the bar is, is closed, and so it makes sense for them to be able to patrol for the lounges at that time as well. So that actually came from a recommendation, um, from your police department.
Just wanna give everybody a chance to speak. Council, is that okay?
Yeah, I'm, I'm just about finished, thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Mayor Proten?
Uh, thank you, Ms. Mayor. Uh, a couple things, and considering including retail locations, you know, one of the things that I'm always made aware of, I think that people have different things in mind when they, but I, I was, um, at Spirit Halloween the other day over in Westchester, um, looking at Halloween stuff, and I happened to notice that it's right next to a Mad Men facility, which is a retail cannabis location, is that correct? And it's right there on Westchester on Sepulveda, surrounded by Target and Halloween Store and cross-street from Ralph's and next to, um, this noodle place I like, Noodle World Junior, um, and IHOP, and Kevin Hart just opened up a restaurant around across the street, and I, um, would've not even noticed it if I hadn't, you know, kinda looked up and saw this big red building and kinda wondered what it was. And so I, I've definitely observed that, you know, other cities have been able to allow retail locations in major thoroughfares that blend well into the surrounding area, that work well with other types of businesses, and doesn't seem like there's any challenges with those operations. And so I would imagine that our committee, when evaluating, um, any potential retail location, would hold these applicants to a, a very high standard, such as Mad Men, I don't know if they're the gold standarder or not, but something like that or, or even nicer, where there wouldn't be any kind of negative impact on traffic or, or the community or visually at all. Well-lit, and, and I, I think that this ordinance suggests, um, a lot of security as well, security cameras that link to the police department and all this other stuff, so I, I don't think that we have to be concerned about, uh, if we hold any retail locations to this type of standard, concerned about some of the things I think some people may be concerned about, especially with the legal dispensaries that, that have operated around us, and even speaking on that, on that point, I understand, I think I was told, and correct me if I'm wrong, El Segundo has a, a ordinance on the ballot, maybe Hermosa Beach as well, and so it looks like we will soon be, you know, surrounded by cities who are offering retail locations. So I, I, I would be pretty sure to say most of us have passed by some legal retail locations and not even known or been bothered by them or, or they've caused any issues, but 100% I, I'm glad the fact that this ordinance suggests a lot of security, lighting, and coordination with the police department. There's a couple of things I, I want to comment on. One was, um, where it talks about the applicant, and we're definitely, it was a great idea to restrict applicants of anybody who has any economic interest, um, you know, it says no current former or prospective city official, employer, consultant, or contractor can be an applicant. I would just think that we might need to provide greater clarity on what perspective means. Um, so I, I don't know if that means somebody that's a, um, a candidate on the ballot or somebody's gone through interview process with the city or have, or whatever, so I think maybe a little bit of clarity about kinda what perspective means in that respect. As far as what my colleagues are talking about, as far as locations, um, well, I, I think that is definitely important that we, um, you know, take the advice and guidance of our consultant. We spent a number of months kinda interviewing a number of consultants, and we hired a particular consultant that made a recommendation based upon studying our city, working with our police department, working with our planning department, and mimicking some of the ordinance in some, in some neighboring cities that, that were successful. I definitely wouldn't want us to pursue this program and it not work out the way we wanted to. Like, the reason why we wanted to, want to pursue a cannabis ordinance is, one, um, there's an understanding that a majority of the, the voters have voted to want something like this to come into the community, but also, we wanna make sure we do it where it's safe, where it's well-thought-out, and where this pursuit yields, you know, yields profits, and we wouldn't want to unroll a program that left us in the red in the whole application process. I believe that, I think it was said that, that part of how many, um, retail locations were being suggested definitely influenced the amount of applicants, the quality of applicants, and those things would definitely influence the experience that the city would have, you know, if they were to open, as well as how much money we would recoup. We want this to be a full cost recovery program, and so I, I would support reducing the amount of locations, maybe getting rid of the social equity, um, component altogether, and doing five retail locations. To what Councilperson Valentine said, she's, she said, "No, um, consumption without retail." Is that part of this ordinance?
So we changed, um, some of the language a little bit. So we are now calling it "social use venue," which is essentially the same thing.
Got it.
So, and that's to-
Something about retail, I do see that.
Yeah, and that was just for two reasons. One, to help distinguish those with retail and without, so it's clearer, and also because we did get quite a bit of, um, comment from the council about what other types of businesses could there be, including cannabis. So we looked at, um, the City of Las Vegas actually just passed an ordinance to allow a social use venues, which would include like cannabis-friendly type of uses. For example, if you had a cannabis-friendly hotel, or, um, I love my, the, my example of the cannabis yoga studio, or other entertainment venues that allow cannabis. They would, under this ordinance, would be required to get a permit from the city, and that would go through, um, that would go through some of the, the same process that we have for our retailers as well.
So would it be a discretionary process to award this?
It would be a discretionary process, same as with retail.
So one thing I kinda, you know, wanna make note of, you know, the way I see this ordinance, um, written is staff, which constitutes, uh, a couple of police officers, will evaluate applications, recommend the top applicants, and recommend those top applicants to get licenses. If those, those licenses are granted by the council, they, they would then have to go secure a location and apply for a conditional use permit. They're not able to, to obtain a location within a reasonable amount of time and, and meet the standards of the Planning Commission, then they may not be granted a conditional use permit.
Absolutely.
Um, and then, in which they would lose their license, and then the next person on the list would kind of have that opportunity to, to pursue that process.
That's correct, and also, the commission would have, um, and the staff would have the same ability as they do now with any other type of, um, use that requires a conditional approval, they would be able to improve, impose conditions on that project that could be site-specific. So if we have a location that is, you, um, you know, maybe it's without, it's past the 500 or 600 foot from a school, but still within a thousand, and there are specific measures that the council or the commission decide that they want to impose on that particular business, they could still do that through the conditional use project, um, process by imposing those conditions. So we do have, um, as a city, a lot of control over what these retailers will look like, how they would operate, um, the design elements, all of those things would be within the purview of the, of the Planning Commission.
And as it seems now, um, if an applicant had site control through the application process, would that give them more merit than when they, when they did not have site control?
Right now, as we have the draft, um, score sheets together, no, it wouldn't. But what it would help them do is have a better idea of the design. So obviously, if you actually have your building, your design is going to have more details, and it won't be conceptual, but we take in conditional use applications all the time with conceptual drawings, so that isn't something that's completely foreign to any city. But with that being said, we do require that you, um, at, we do ask on the application, or we are proposing that we ask, if you don't have the site under complete control, for example, we don't have a lease, and we're doing that to avoid some of the pitfalls that we saw, for example, in, in the City of LA, where you had applicants paying for three, four, five years on a property going through the process. Had I started this process and I secured a location, we're a year and a half plus in, I would be paying very high rents on a location, and we don't even know if we have an ordinance yet. So to avoid that, we said, we followed West Hollywood and some of the other cities that allow you to start the process, but you can't, you can't, we have to do a sequin analysis, so we can't do that without site control. So at some point through the process, you absolutely have to declare a site, and the ordinance spells out when and how long you have to do that before you are removed from that, so.
And I would imagine with the, the distance requirements, the amount of, um, you know, retail locations we have or possible locations we have in the city, there's only a, a finite amount of possible, um, places that somebody could secure for an ordinance. Somebody, if people went and scrambled for site control first, then applied, um, there could be kind of a bidding war, and then, like, retailers could just start reserving their space just for cannabis.
Absolutely.
And then charging astronomical amounts.
The cannabis tax, we call it. The cannabis tax.
And then limiting the amount of profits that cannabis, um, locations could earn, and they, of course, limited their success, which was limiting the success of the city by them not being successful.
Absolutely.
Um, so yeah, that, that definitely makes sense, the, you know, the way it's, the way it's written.
Can I have one comment?
Sure.
Not, is that okay? I just have one comment.
Yeah, right.
So in your discussion with regards to the, um, property owners, right? We have recently had a couple of illegal cannabis businesses in Hawthorne, um, shut down because they were operating illegal, illegally, and not to mention, we don't even have a, an ordinance, let alone are we legally, um, a, a cannabis business city, right? So in those instances, instances, I was actually looking at, um, dinging the property owner for providing a cannabis business their property, knowing that there isn't an ordinance, it's not approved, we don't even have cannabis, right? I would've been willing to do that.
You know, I was under the impression that once we pass an ordinance, we have the ability to find, um, illegal operations at, is it $10,000 a day or something crazy like that?
Yeah, we actually have, um, various fees that we can impose on operators who are operating without a license once we have this ordinance passed.
Or moreover, just exempt them.
And then we can also do a daily, it's actually a daily amount that we have proposed. So that, that's another thing that you all could set. Right now, I think we have it at $1,000 per day per infraction, so every violation of the code that you have is $1,000 per day. So if you operate without a license, you're growing, whatever, it could be 20 different things, so it could easily be $10,000 a day, $20,000 a day.
It's likely that those who went through the legal process to open a business will keep their eye open for those who are illegally operating and communicate with the police department about that.
Absolutely, because they're a, they're gonna be a unfair, they're gonna be at an unfair advantage at that point. You're spending a lot of money to go through this process, a lot of time, and then also you're paying a lot of taxes. So if you're gonna be a neighbor to someone who's not doing any of those things, we have seen, and the state has reports as well, um, of a, a lot more, um, cooperation with shutting down these, these, um, non-licensed operators from licensed operators. They've seen the heaviest enforcement that they've ever seen, and it's cooperation by licensed operators. So, um, it does behoove you to have some type of enforcement process in the city and a program in the city to help, to help that effort of getting rid of the black market.
Plus, the State of Cannabis, the Department of Cannabis with the State of California, they come down, and you're done. You, you don't even have a chance.
Right. And just one last thing, just wanted to comment on one of the things that, that the Councilwoman mentioned about the no cap on certain operations. I remember having that same concern at one of our working committee conversations about that, and, and I'm actually again to kinda address, you know, the reasons why we don't need to have a, a, um, a, a cap on those operations. But I, I do remember us, you know, talking about that, you know, these would be relegated to the industrial area, and I know our industrial, um, area Hawthorne has very little, very, very little vacancy, is actually in high demand, most industrial that's not far from the ports in general are in high demand with very little vacancy. I think we might be at 5% vacancy rate in our industrial area, and so it'd be challenging for, I think, these businesses to compete with all the SpaceX-related businesses, the Amazon-related businesses that are already occupying those areas, to, to get a lot of locations. I'm not saying they wouldn't get any, but I don't think they would dominate the, the landscape based upon that, but I don't know if there's anything else on that, on that topic that-
No, but, no, we did do that land survey, so we did our real estate survey, looking at the availability that you have and what zones you have availability, um, so we did, we did do that research, and that, that was our finding, that you don't have a ton of available real estate, and you are, you have a lot of competitors for that real estate, as you just mentioned.
Okay, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, well-
I have another comment.
Councilwoman Ray English, and then, uh, Councilwoman Valentine, and then myself.
I just wanted to real quickly speak to the community at large that is watching tonight's council meeting from home, um, the importance of, of knowing- Um, the importance of, of knowing, uh, accurate and correct information. Um, there are a lot of, uh, misleading information, and the reason it's misleading, it's because those few want you to believe that it's gonna be XYZ, just horrible. Our city is, is small in a sense, that we have eyes on it every day. And we're aware of the activities that are taking place and are not. And I say that because our police is, is, is the ones that are providing us privileged information on these types of businesses, and how they were instrumental in providing some, some feedback, and more importantly, direction on, on exactly how it is that we want our ordinance to look, and how, uh, we would have the ability to truly, um, have eyes on it through cameras and other means. So, um, again, this is solely a, um, an economic engine that we're looking at to implement for the sole purpose of bringing revenue to the city. And a lot of you might think that, oh, you know, you're selling yourself to the devil, et cetera, et cetera. I, I've, I've been, you know, personally attacked, I've been given, you know, the cannabis woman, the weed woman, you know, all kinds of names, and that's neither here or there. I'm a grandmother of seven. Um, I know how important it is to secure our children, et cetera, et cetera. Um, however, um, unlike the city of Los Angeles with over ten million people and fifteen council districts, I mean, it takes days just to find, you know, enforcement, right? So, I'm proud of what we've been doing and what we've been working hard, um, to, to bring, uh, tonight with regards to the discussion, and more importantly, taking personal comments and feedback from the audience. Truly, um, we would not be looking at sixteen, that's just ridiculous for the size of city that we have. So, those are the types of things that I'm talking about, you know, to be in the know, to truly understand exactly. And it's in the ordinance, and you could see that, it's listed as six. However, um, I appreciate the feedback, I appreciate the information. Please know that we truly are looking out for the community, for our children. And, um, at the same time, it, it, it really, um, speaks to some of the, um, some of the, um, issues with regards to, you know, open bars, sales of liquor, you know, um, liquor stores, et cetera, et cetera. And it, 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 it's just, it's just, it's just, uh, it's, it's just so much, um, frustration sometimes um, to, to believe that these businesses or those alike are gonna be selling to children. I mean, that's just, it's beyond mind-boggling. But, um, I just wanted to express that, um, personal, personal note to those that are at home. And for those that were not aware, um, the city's been here for over a hundred years. There's ways of finding out exactly what's happening in your city. You just have to look it up, come to call the city clerk's office, pull up, uh, on the website, Google City Council, Google item, items. Um, there's many ways to find out what's happening in your city. But thanks.
Uh, I'm gonna be after Councilwoman Valentine.
All right. So, um, on page four of the ordinance, um, there's a discussion about locations. Um, the cannabis retail or consumption business must be outside of a, a five-hundred-foot radius. There's been a proposal for six-hundred-foot, which I agree with. And, and one, two, and three in that, in that section, F-one, two, and three, talks about distances. Um, and I think we should make sure that we have uniform good maps so that in, or for all of the applicants, so that they will know the places to avoid.
Yes, um, we will be producing those maps. We will be producing all of the sensitive use maps, as well as, um, the, where the schools are located, our, um, I think we talk about, um, treatment facilities and treatment centers, what the city considers a treatment or daycare, um, adult daycare facility. All of those will be mapped, and those maps will be provided to applicants before they, the application process, so that they can, um, secure a location outside of those.
Okay. And then I have another comment, but because, um, all over the state, illegal shops, illegal businesses have siphoned money away from legal shops because the legal shops are required to, um, have a, 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 a legal process, and they, they act, they are, they, they pay more money because they're actually, um, they're actually set up legally. So, they, they, they do all, they go through all the hoops, pay the permit fees and all. But the illegal shops don't have to do any of that, and in many cases, they have siphoned money away from the retail shops that are legal. And, um, I haven't seen any great enforcement by the city of Los Angeles or by the county of Los Angeles to prevent that. So, illegal shops are everywhere, and they, they do, um, I mean, they're difficult to control, and they do siphon money away. So, has this been taken into account? Because I don't think, I mean, I could be wrong, but, but because we are surrounded by so many places, um, unincorporated areas where they don't do very much enforcement, and the city of Los Angeles, in which they don't do very good enforcement, um, it could very well affect our bottom line when it comes to these shops. Is that not correct?
It, it definitely could, um, in theory. I think one thing that Hawthorne has that a lot of cities don't is a very good police, an active police department. Um, also, the state is actually actively creating additional enforcement teams and measures. If you follow the, the, um, depart- the cannabis department of cannabis control, they are really cracking down on the, the unlicensed operators now. Um, and I, I agree with you, I, early on, it was kind of short.
The shop that people were talking about.
Yeah, they are.
On Angelwood Avenue, they were operating for at least a year, and nobody did anything about it. They were in the incor- unincorporated area.
Yeah, and I think that with a lot of this enforcement, um, these enforcement efforts and some of the money that the state is using to help, um, cities do enforcement, and these additional, um, tasks force they're building, you are starting to see more and more enforcement. But if you look at cities and counties like the county of Riverside, they do a great job with enforcement. The city is very serious, and the county is too about enforcement. You're not seeing as much illegal activity there, and their retailers are doing great. So, I agree with you that enforcement is, um, really important. But I think that Hawthorne is in a unique, um, situation to a lot of some of your other cities that don't even have their own police department. Um, so, I think also with the retailers being looped into the, um, surveillance system of your, of your, um, police department, I think you're gonna know exactly who's licensed, who's not. You're not gonna have any of this, um, you know, I'm not sure even from a consumer. Sometimes as a consumer, you're not even sure what shops are legal or not. And I think in your city, it's gonna be very clear which shops are licensed and which ones are not licensed. So, yes, it is an issue, but I do think we have a lot of measures in here to, to fight, um, illegal operations in the city.
Um, if I may, we need to come up with a consensus on the ordinance.
Sure, sure, sure. She has the floor?
Thank you.
She has the floor, sir?
Let's go.
Are you done? All right, guys. So, um, thank you, sir. I was about to say that, so that's what I just felt like. All right. Look, so, um, so I wanna thank, uh, EJMA, our, our staff, and our chairwoman, Angie Ray English, for their efforts. I purposely didn't attend the meetings, I purposely didn't watch them to see what the results of that would be. Um, I wouldn't want my presence to influence the board or any of the people speaking there to influence what they would say, et cetera. So, I'm very pleased with what, uh, what, what has come about, um, in general terms. So, the only changes that I would like to see on this thing, because, uh, these should be minor changes at this point. The only changes I would like to see is to remove the social equity component and just keep, keep six retails without any social, well, no, just let me go through it. Six retail without any social equity component. Um, we probably won't get any takers for the social equity components kind of shown. So, six retail without a social equity component, increasing to six hundred feet, uh, as suggested by one of my colleagues, and to remove the consumption without retail, which is the social venue. So, I'd like to keep it at six, six hundred feet, and no consumption without retail, social venue. Do I have support for that?
I would support that.
I'll support that. And you, do you need a motion? You wanna make a motion?
Yeah, so, just repeating, six retail without, uh, social equity component. The six, five hundred to six hundred feet, right? Five hundred to six hundred feet. Yeah, limitation.
Increase, yeah.
And then, yeah, increase it, and no consumption without retail, the social use venue, that's the lounge, right? I mean-
So, this will not be a motion, so we don't need, um, uh, someone to move and second it. We just need a consensus, so it's just a vote, straight vote would be fine.
This is kind of gathering by, based on what I've heard here, so, and, uh, I kind of agree with a lot of the feedback I've got in here.
So, uh, Ms., the, um, Mr. Mayor has proposed six retail um, with no social equity, no consumption without retail, and six hundred feet distance. So, if that is agreeable to everyone, then I could put that as a, uh, as an introduction for tonight.
Is that considered interdelineation, that you could just in, place those in there today?
So, as long as we have consensus, what, um, I would request that you look at page two of three of the staff report, the agenda bill. So, we're at section five point one hundred point zero five zero, that's license type and number of license.
Yep.
So, we have resolved that, and we also went into the, the distance issue.
Which is, uh-
So, what I need to know is, are there any council members that disagree with those issues that was just suggested by, by the mayor?
Okay.
Okay, so then, move along. Then we have a, in that, um, we have also, um, the cannabis evaluation panel, which will be made up of, in the ordinance, seven staff members, two police officers, one assistant city attorney, one department head for finance, a department head for business license, and the department head for planning and public works. That makes up seven. Are there any council members that disagree with the, the scoring panel for the applications? So, we're gonna include that. Hold that one second. Um, next is, the scoring method is by the application process, but there is a scoring for a narrative, where it includes a category of business model, community engagement, operation experience, security plan and design. Are the, uh, scoring narratives, is, is there any council members that disagree with that, as a scoring method? The top scoring qualifying will have, um, one year to find a location and obtain a CUP. Are there any disagreement with that?
Through the chair. So-
Yep.
So, none of you are, are supporting the, the lottery process after this election?
No?
No.
Okay.
Keep moving.
So, um-
Thank you for asking, though.
Oh, well, I have to ask.
That's really kind.
I thought it would be much more transparent, so.
So, and then, section five point one hundred point zero nine zero is that there will be no communication to the panel allowed by either the applicants or city officials, that includes commissioners and city council in the scoring process.
Communication of what type? Related to the topic itself?
Yes, related to the cannabis scoring itself.
Like, how's your family, you know, what did you do this weekend?
Thanks.
Um, I mean, I say it jokingly, but at the same time, that's kind of a good question, I would say.
One second.
How it's going? Nothing.
Okay. Give me one second, I have to look into something. So, this, the, the, the staff report is kind of a summary of the ordinance and detail of the scoring method. Um, in ca- and there's top applicants that have the top scores, but in case there are ties, uh, we would go into, the ordinance is drafted, so you would go into different car- categories of the narrative to see who scored higher, to break the tie. So, the way the ordinance is drafted, in the, that's in, uh, section five point one hundred point zero eight zero, subsection F. In the event of an additional tie, in the, in the event of a tie in determining top applicants in any cannabis bus- business license category, the applicant with the higher scores in business model is the, that will break the tie. If there's still a tie, then it goes into, um, higher score and design concept. And then if there's an addition, if there's still a tie, then, um, it will go into, I believe it was a pool, lottery pool. And then there'll be also waitlist for those who did not make top applicants. Is that also agreeable to all members of the council? Are there any areas of this draft ordinance that's proposed by the staff and the consultant that council members disagree with? Okay.
What do you need now? Motion to introduce?
No, yes, so, uh, we just need to introduce the ordinance as directed by the council.
Um, Mr. City Attorney, sorry, just one thing to clarify for the record. We will be striking out section five point one hundred point one one ten, which is the social equity program.
That's right, okay, that's right.
It's important to know that these could come back if, uh, the council decides, but it'll be a long drawn-out, uh, public hearing process, right? Like, the consumption aspect, it could come back later, or different things. How can you, can you address that?
Yes.
That's a good question, I think.
So, if there are any parts of this that, for example, later, you decide, maybe we do want social, um, consumption venues, then that would be a modification to the ordinance. And so, we would be able to just modify the ordinance, do an ordinance amendment, and add that back in.
Okay. Not that, my personal intention is to bring back, but just any of the others, okay?
So, the mo- so, the, uh, ordinance is introduced, and if we can have them, if you, can have you introduce the ordinance as amended?
Um, who will have, who will say that? That can be anybody on the council, right?
Yes, that's usually-
Kinda let it, and, go ahead. Uh, we're gonna have a recess, so don't worry.
Real quick, ordinance number two-two-three-five, first reading. An ordinance of the city council, the city of Hawthorne, California, enacting chapter five point one zero zero, commercial cannabis business to title five, business regulation and licenses division two, business regulated for introduction. And I'll introduce.
That's it? There's no vote or anything?
As amended.
And as amended.
Okay. All right, guys, so, um, once again, this is, uh, thank you to the, to you, Councilwoman English, staff, EJMA, the residents who gave feedback, because there was feedback guiding the development of this ordinance from the community. And, uh, as you guys saw, the, the, uh, the element of the public lounge is directly, uh, I guess, supported by the overwhelming, uh, group here, because we just wanted, uh, we wanted these operations to be discreet and not just be in everybody's face, and kids walking home from school, you know, by a bar, and you smelling this stuff, right? So, uh, just like you don't want really people out in the streets, you know. I think we should apply some of that to some of the bars that have, like, people running around the street all crazy too, right? So, that was it. Um, we have a small recess, five-minute recess, right here. Uh, this is the longest we've had in like two, three years of a meeting, so I wanna give everybody, uh, five minutes to be able to, uh, put a potty break or whatever. We're in recess. Session from a brief recess. So now we have the ordinances, Madam Clerk, item eight.
Item eight, ordinance twenty-two thirty-six, first reading, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Hawthorne, California, amending section five point sixteen point zero one zero of the Hawthorne Municipal Code to have the city clerk determine the time and place of administrative hearing for introduction.
I introduce. Next we have general matters.
General Matters, item nine, this report serves to provide an overview of the existing regulations regarding short-term rentals in the City of Hawthorne. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the city council discuss how the city currently regulates short-term rentals. Staff recommends the city council receive and file information and provide direction to staff regarding further discussion if necessary.
We have a brief presentation by Chris Palmer.
Very brief, thank you very much.
Is it brief?
Good evening, uh.
I'll limit this.
Mayor Vargas and honorable members of the council, I'm Christopher Palmer, I'm a senior planner with the City of Hawthorne's Plane Department. Back in March tenth, two thousand twenty, the city council adopted ordinance two one nine eight, which is known as the short-term rental ordinance. What is a short-term rental? The Hawthorne Municipal Code defines short-term rental as a dwelling unit or any portion thereof offered for rent for dwelling, lodging or sleeping for no more than thirty consecutive days in the city, including single-family or multifamily housing. Is a permit required? Yes, permits are required and must be renewed annually by payment of renewal fee by showing substantial compliance with the provisions of the municipal code, including payment of business license taxes and regular collection of transit occupancy tax, TOT. What units are eligible? The units that are eligible are single-family homes, duplexes, triplexes, planned unit development and condominiums that have four units or less in total. Uh, short-term rentals are prohibited in section eight housing and is not permitted in accessory dwelling units, ADUs. How many single, I'm sorry, how many short-term rentals are allowed on one property? On lots containing a single-family home or duplex, one short-term rental is permissible on lots with multiple units such as a triplex condominium apartment or any other, you know, multi-unit housing with four or more, you're looking at a maximum of two that are permissible. This pretty much concludes my report, I am available if you have any questions, but that's the state of our existing short-term rental ordinance.
The state of, that's the currently what we have.
Yes, it's existing and it was adopted two one nine, uh, by ordinance two one nine eight in March of two thousand twenty.
Through the chair. Yeah, and I kind of like the way that's laid out, so if it's a discussion, I, I kind of wouldn't want to change much, anything really, but go ahead, uh. Wow.
Go ahead, Mayor, for your protest.
Mayor Plutum, she had her turn earlier.
What's the total amount of licenses that the city is authorized to issue?
Uh, we don't have a cap, but we currently have six licenses that hit, that meet these definitions specifically. I mean, if you took a look and, and search, you probably find at least forty, but we have six that are licensed.
And, and what type of revenue do we receive from, from these?
I'm not sure about the revenue, but they do pay transit occupancy tax, so it'd be a percentage of what they bring in.
They do, they do report their, their revenue and pay a TLT tax?
Yes.
Got it. Uh, I was hoping that, um, we can revisit this ordinance and maybe update it, uh, it's been some time since, um, it was passed and had the opportunity to see how it operates within the City of Hawthorne. Um, there's obviously been a lot of different ordinances passed throughout the, the country on this subject, I was, um, not asking really to take any kind of action immediately, but I was hoping that there can be some research done as to other cities who are allowing short-term rental ordinances and that may are doing so successfully and, you know, receiving a decent amount of revenue from it to, um, maybe do some research about, you know, what theirs look like. Um, I would like to point to Long Beach as well as one example. I know a little bit about Long Beach, I have a short-term rental in Long Beach myself, I've paid a lot of TLT tax there. But, and just kind of maybe, you know, provide some information back as far as what, what else is happening in there and maybe we might want to make some updates in the future.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Palmer, for your report. I want to talk about, uh, including, um, an enforcement portion to the, uh, short-term rental, and this is why. Myself and along with other council members and other departments have received numerous complaints about, I'll say, one in particular, short-term rental. We even have, um, police report with the number of callouts that have been to the location. So in these types of instant instances, and they're licensed, they're a business, they do TOT, et cetera, et cetera, however, they're doing illegal activity which includes a number of things, I won't say exactly what, what they are, but obviously there's a lot of activity going on that's illegal, it's not being used for just, for the sole purpose of rest and sleep or what have you, right? So I want to see how we can maybe bring, if we're gonna bring the item back for some updates, maybe to include an enforcement, um, you know, should they be, um, reported to the police and there's a numerous, um, callouts to the location that ultimately their licenses and whatnot be revoked? Thank you.
So I'd like to add, yeah, sure, I'd like to revisit it, um, but the topic that, um, what Councilwoman English just mentioned, we need to inject that concern into the conversation with that one unit, it's, it's basically a party house, you rent this out and you invite like a hundred friends and it becomes a party house. And then you're, the neighbors across the street, next to it, the whole block, it becomes a problem, parking nightmare, you got kids running around all drugged out, you know? Well, shoot, let's not talk about that right now. Intoxicated, in what, however intoxicated and causing problems for the neighbors, you got little kids, you know, families, older adults. So that need, for my, from my perspective, that would be a consideration of mine if we talk about it whether to increase, reduce or enforce, those are a couple of the options. So I'd like for you to just, uh, just brace yourself for that type of conversation.
Duly noted, nuisance abatement.
Nuisance abatement, yeah, I guess that's, all right.
And through the chair, just a quick mention, because, um, this weekend I was, uh, in, in the installation of this program and, and was one of the resident was asking me if we allowed, uh, short-term renters and also if there was a permit. So I think we need to disseminate this information, um, more in our website and, because people don't know, because, uh, even she said, oh. know, because even she said, oh, my daughter's been doing a short-term renter, but no permit, because they didn't know that we have a process, okay? So that, that's something that we need to look at into, how to disseminate this information out there, okay? And we still have that limitation, right? They cannot rent no more than thirty days, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk, please read item ten into the record, and then we will have a presentation by Barry Foster of HDL. Is that still the case?
Yes.
Barry Foster, if you could step up.
Item ten, economic development staffing and retail recruitment services. Recommended motion, staff recommends that the City Council direct on Hawthorne Economic Development and Retail Recruitment Services.
Go ahead, sir. You, is that the presentation? Okay, let's make sure it's brief, sir. That's twenty slides I don't think I can focus on, so hopefully you abbreviated it. Just like Mr. Chris Palmer, he did a great job.
Golden Suite, right?
Basically, right, so.
I'm gonna try to go quickly through a PowerPoint that hits some of the high points of the agenda bill and staff report. My name is Barry Foster. I'm a principal and managing director with HDL Companies. I head up our Economic Development Division. I know a lot of you from, from doing ARPA work for you for the last couple of years. And tonight, we've, we've come before you and we've been working with the city manager about an opportunity to do Economic Development Staffing and Retail Recruitment Services for the city.
Hey, Mr. Foster, put that, the mic higher.
Can you double-click on the, can you double-click on the slide? It'll, it should maximize.
Artic show. Go to slide show.
It's on the lower right, no?
There's a bunch of places you can do it from.
Yeah, right. If you double-click too, right, it should open up. There we go. Wow, so makes a difference.
So, so HDL are with our Economic Solutions, Econ Solutions Division. We've done work for one hundred and sixty-five local governments during the last eight years with just a variety of stuff, but one of the things we focused a lot on is doing retail recruitment and economic development services for cities. Here's just the logos of, of those one hundred and sixty-five local governments, and most of those have been cities. On the retail recruitment side, we've done work with client cities where we've helped facilitate sixty-five retail and restaurant transactions, and those have generated a little over three-point-seven-five million dollars in new sales tax revenue for those clients. So what we offered up to Hawthorne is a two-year proposal. Year one, we're doing some of the legwork to kind of understand your, your opportunities to look at retail recruitment possibilities in the city and doing a number of things with the fixed fee. So year one, we're looking at doing a market assessment of Hawthorne, including the citywide commercial retail property assessment. So we're looking at all those key properties, those vacancies that you've got, shopping centers, and then looking at what kind of opportunities exist there. The second piece is doing an insight market analytics package that gets into demographics, but looks at daytime population, looks at health segmentation, looks at employment profile. It's really important to not only have rooftops, but look at your daytime population to have any good jobs, the housing balance for retail is really, really important. Then the next piece is doing, understanding your marketplace, looking at those targets for possibilities in terms of going into vacant retail locations and, and look at coming up with possible targets that we can go after that we think fit with what you've got available in Hawthorne. We do work all over the state, so we, we keep track of where people want to be in terms of retailers and restaurants and try to come up with, with good fits in terms of what would work with possibilities for retailers and restaurants here in Hawthorne. And then continuing on, we, we take all that information, put together a retail recruitment action plan, which really kind of acts as your foundation or the roadmap to look at, at trying to increase more, more retail possibilities, filling up vacancies and those kinds of things. And then the last piece that we've got is doing a marketing packet and designing that that we can go out then and make outreach to potential users. Those are all fixed fees, so all that is being done for a fixed fee of fifty thousand dollars, which we're doing in that first year. And then as also part of the first year, we're also looking at, at doing on an hourly retainer basis where we're going to act as your, as, as basically your economic development staffing and helping with the retail recruitment, doing that function for you. We're doing this for a number of cities. We're, we're doing work all over the state. We're very active with, with the brokerage community, with potential developers, retailers, restaurants. We kind of know where they want to be, what they're looking for. We have, we have a pretty good, close relationship with a lot of those folks all over the state. So again, that's, that's being done on an hourly basis with a not-to-exceed amount. And then we're also going to go out, there's a number of, we've seen a couple of your council members and your city manager that have looked at, at participating in, in a number of international council shopping center conferences. There's the big one in Las Vegas. This year was the thirty-first year that I've attended that conference over the years that, that's nationally, internationally, actually. Usually, I think they had probably thirty-five thousand people up there this year. But we're also looking at, we just participated in an event for the Western United States down in San Diego. And then we also have one, there's one in Monterey, and there's one that's usually in Long Beach or Anaheim, too. And so we're going out, scheduling meetings with potential retailers, with potential restaurants, with the users that we think would be good fits for your properties that are vacant here in Hawthorne. So again, that, that, that fee is a, so the total compensation with the fixed fee and the hourly rate is a not-to-exceed fee of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the first year. And then year two, it's going to be an additional seventy-five thousand dollars to do that outreach, that retainer basis I talked about. And then we're also going to charge five thousand dollars just to update your insight market analytics package to make sure that's fresh and updated. So the, the total compensation for the, the full two-year period is a not-to-exceed amount of two-hundred-and-five thousand dollars. The team that we have would be, I would be the project manager for it. We have Ken Duran as a senior advisor. Ken's done a lot of ARPA work for you. He's a, he's a retired city manager, but very, very connected and understands the retail and restaurant environment. And then we have Fiona Chang, who's an analyst. We all work out of the Brea office, which is our corporate headquarters in Orange County. Together, we've got sixty years of economic development experience. A lot of that is on the retail recruitment side. And then we'd also, on a case-by-case basis, we have the, the access to use a commercial real estate broker, Shannon Green, who works out of Corona Del Mar. She's got over twenty-five years of experience, and I've worked with her a lot over the years if we had need to bring her in and utilize her expertise, too. So with that, I just wanted to give you a quick kind of snapshot, hit, hit the high points. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Through the chair. Yes, sir? Whenever, if, yes.
Mr. Foster, you say you work with a number of cities. Could you expound upon other cities you've worked with in this capacity and maybe share some of your successes?
Sure. I went back to that, that previous slide, and so the sixty-five different transactions that we've been involved with, they include everything from a Costco down to lots of restaurants, you know, Burlington, Ross, you know, filling up a lot of those spaces. We filled up and worked with a lot of different cities on, on looking at, you know, former K-Marts and splitting those buildings up and putting those, there's no one hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot users that are going to come back in and look at like a Kmart facility or, or closed Sears or something like that. It's going to be a combination typically with like a Ross, a Burlington, Five Below, you know, those kinds of places that will go in and, and take a hundred, one hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot space and put in probably four or five different users.
Could you give us maybe a specific example? Let's say, you know, in Bellflower, you took the whole Kmart. I don't know if that Kmart is still even open, I'm just hypothetically, I don't know.
I, I can do one in, in Diamond Bar. So that was a former Kmart. And so it, it was, it's just south of the sixty freeway. We worked for the city. We worked with the owner of that, of that, of that property. There was a Kmart in there. Kmart was going away, and so they took the space back again. And so we worked to bring in a Ross Dress for Less, a Burlington, a Sprouts, and then there's, they put in two pads with a, with a coffee bean and a Chipotle and a Habit Burger in there.
Sound like you really revitalized that shopping center.
Yeah. And then across the street from there, there was a former grocery store that used to be a Vons, and it was a Hagan, then Hagan went out of business in California. We ended up putting a Smart and Final in there.
And lastly, could you talk to us about why it's valuable for us to employ your services as opposed to letting market conditions, you know, do what it do, you know?
That's a great question. So I look at our role kind of being a facilitator. And so we are, we are working for the city. It doesn't cost the, the property owner or the, we're not trying to infringe upon any kind of a commission fee for a broker or whatever else, they're still going to get their fee. We're trying to help paint that picture, tell that story about, about Hawthorne, about this marketplace and working with the property, acting as a facilitator, as a kind of a matchmaker and looking at that. Those cities that are aggressive in going after this are usually more successful. And so again, we're, we're, we're just, we're, we're helping do that. We're a little bit different than from when a staff is doing it. We've got a lot of experience having done it and having done it all over the state. And so, and we have a pretty good track record. Those sixty-five different transactions over the last five and a half years are generating a lot of, a lot of revenue, three-point-seven-five million dollars in revenue, new sales tax revenue for those cities. And so we have a pretty good track record, there's no promises, but, but we're pretty aggressive at it, and we have a good track record. And so I think that we've got that experience and that expertise that you don't get from a staff perspective sometimes. And so I, I know, I know resources are, resources are tough for cities, and so, you know, we're not coming in and doing this on a full-time basis, but we're going to come in and be aggressive.
Thank you.
Through the chair. I was, I'll go.
Yeah, okay, let's, let's just go there and then go right back to you. Okay, go ahead. Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. So the City of Hawthorne has many assets, but it also has had headwinds. And I want to know, you've had a chance to take a look at the city, and what headwinds have you observed and how would you approach meeting that challenge?
Yes, so I think every city has challenges, and especially now with, you know, we're still, we're still in this pandemic and that there's still some tough conditions. You've got some vacancies, you've got quite a few vacancies, and so I think we would, we would go look at those opportunities. We would, we have to work with the property owners, obviously, but looking at, at those opportunities, figuring out what we think are a good fits. One of the first things that we kind of do is, is do avoid analysis and figure out who's not here, who's not in one of the adjacent communities in terms of potential retailers and, and those that we know that are active and looking at expanding and, and would look at a market like this with the demographics and all the market analytics that you have here. And so we would jump in pretty quickly and try to look at what those opportunities are. I think every community has, has challenges and headwinds, and so we would, we would want to take that head on and, and look at what would be good fits for those, for those vacancies.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Don't go in here, hesitate, I'm like, that's, that's coming, but go ahead.
Well, thank you for your presentation, Mr. Foster. My question is, and it was somewhat similar to Councilmember Valentine with, with regards to, you know, reviewing the city, seeing, seeing the city for what it is as far as taking drives, taking a look at it, right? You're saying you have staff that does this and they do an assessment of properties, et cetera, et cetera. So my whole thing is, you know, duplicate of, of, of ongoing businesses that, you know, we don't need too many of, if you, if you understand what I'm saying. It's like, we, there's only so many marshals that we need, there's only so many Ross's that we need, there's only so many car washes that we need. That's like, you know, I was a stickler to putting moratoriums on no more car washes. But having said that, your outreach component, you mentioned that you're going to be having a group of outreach going out to the community to find out what the community wants. Well, for the last fifteen-plus years, I've been here, what, thirty-eight years, I could tell you what the community wants just right here, right now. And a lot of it has to do with sit-down restaurants. You know, a lot of it has to do with what's happening in other cities such as Torrance and those alike that are in the South Bay region that have malls like Manhattan Beach and et cetera, et cetera. These are the types of things that, you know, we're motivated for, and that's why the city has taken a more aggressive approach with regards to securing properties of its own to try and find, incentivize ways to entice these types of, of developers and more importantly, those that would be willing to come to Hawthorne. We're centralized in a perfect location, right off the one-oh-five, the four-oh-five, the Harbor One-Ten, LAX, and, you know, we used to be the hidden city at one point, and then, you know, we're not. But having said that, if we're not, we need to attract those types of businesses, but I want also to, to see in the year that you say that you're going to do this, to come back with some real results with regards to what's, you know, how exactly are you going to tackle that, and more importantly, who are you speaking to already maybe that might be interested in coming to Hawthorne?
I think that's, and that's a great point, is that we're doing work with a lot of different cities, and so I think we've got those relationships and we look to bring other users here. You know, I, I do want to just stress, too, that wanting something is, is one thing, it's showing that you're a good fit in terms of market analytics. It's a, it's a retailer that's looking to expand and, like Trader Joe's is an example. Trader Joe's did one new location in the state of California last year. And so they, you know, and I've, I've done a lot of transactions with Trader Joe's over the years, and I worked for the City of Minrovia years ago. We, we got a location there and we moved their corporate headquarters there, then now got purchased by Aldi, so they're part of a bigger company, they're part of a German company. And so Trader Joe's has been more focused on doing work out of the state, just because it's, it's challenging to do work in California. And so they can make more money doing a new location in Boise, Idaho, or in Texas, or in Arizona or someplace else. And so you, you've got to still have those market realities, too, about people that, that want to expand. And so part, part we have to do is, is, is understanding those market realities, too, but looking at good fits. And I think there's a lot of good possibilities for Hawthorne. We just need to get, roll our sleeves up and jump in and, and, but we need to also look at working with those property owners. And so you, you can, you can want to do a lot of different things, but you've got to have them that they still need to strike a deal, they still need to get, you know, the proper rent structure and, and whatever else. But I think our track record is pretty good at facilitating those kinds of things, and I think we're pretty good at it.
I hope so. I look forward to hearing more and learning how you're working hard on behalf of the City of Hawthorne and really take into account the restaurant setting and those that, that could be family-oriented and could bring more of a cohesiveness to, you know, the type of business that we're willing to spend our dollars at. And really, truly, I'm not for anything that's going to be duplicated that we don't have, we, we already have enough of.
Yeah.
Including driveway, drive-in, drive, window, window restaurants, you know, drive-throughs.
Drive-throughs, yeah. And I think, you know, but there's a lot of drive-throughs that are, that, that provide, there's some good restaurants that it's another opportunity for them to drive some business through a drive-through, and lots of people like the convenience of drive-throughs. One of the, one of the biggest segments right now in the restaurant business, the fastest-growing segment is fast casual. You know, sit-down restaurants are still a little bit tough, and so not that you can't do those, but it, the, the fast casual is, is between a quick service and, and more of a kind of a sit-down restaurant. And there's a lot of really kind of popular fast casuals, I think that would be good fits here, too.
Okay, Councilwoman Montero?
Thank you, Mr. Me. Thank you, Mr. Foster, for your presentation. Yeah, just the same line of question with Ms. English. I see over here that you have worked with desirable restaurants such as BJ, Buffalo Whew, Cheesecake, Flaming House, Mini Cafe Piff Chain, Roy's of Hawaii, and Yard House. So those are kind of buzzword that we want to be, to put in your head, that we want some of these, you know, desirable restaurants in our, in our city. And I visit, I think we speak of Rivera, one of the city where they, they have these beautiful incubator restaurants, small restaurants like in the same place.
A food hall?
Like a food hall, yes. So, you know, that will be a desire thing for, for, for us here in Hawthorne, right? Like you said, you know, those fast casual places that is open up and now people just going there to have fun and they can taste different food.
That, that's a popular concept, that's gaining steam. It took kind of a little bit sideways when the pandemic hit, but it's coming back again where you're taking, you're taking a bigger space, you know? Sit-down restaurants, there's a lot of sit-down restaurants that, you know, are not going into, they're not taking as big a spaces, they're not taking the seven, eight thousand square foot restaurants anymore. They just don't make enough money for them on a per-square-foot basis, looking in, coming in and doing. Looking in, coming in and doing more of those food hall kinds of things with kind of an open-air kind of thing where um, you're not putting a lot of money in terms of tenant improvements in there, but you're putting in four or five different uses. Um, if we can find those kind of opportunities, if we can find a um, an owner or developer to do that, but there's, it's picking up a lot more steam and that's, that's really the kind of the future is doing those.
And it's also like the ghost kitchen, right?
Or, I even like that too.
Yeah, and also hotels, okay? Because I would love for somebody to come in and buy some of those motels on Imperial and transform them into a three, four-star hotel. I'd be very happy.
Yeah, the, the hotel business, when the pandemic hit, it, they really suffered. It's coming back again. We do a lot of work in a lot of places where business, business travel has come back. It's, it's more the consumer travel, um, the vacation travel is kind of not. But I think your location here um, would be a great opportunity for another hotel for business, for business travel.
We're going to have a lot of travels coming from overseas for the World Cup, Olympics. So we need those hotels to be ready by then.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Bring, bring Portos and uh, I'll, I'll be forever in your debt.
Every city we go and they talked about Portos.
Bring Portos and we'll be good.
Everybody, everybody finished? All right. Uh, so this is, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So this is a comment to my council colleagues, it was, it didn't really involve the gentleman in anything. No, not in a bad way. Look, um, so guys, uh, my feedback is based on listening and hearing respectful feedback, respectful, maybe disagree uh, disagreement on some of the things that were said. In terms of uh, in some ways, I feel that this could be a duplicate effort, um, bringing in a group like this to do this, okay? Uh, we do have a broker, somebody who's working on our behalf, who's on our, on, you know, under contract. You guys all know the gentleman that's related, okay, so no need to bring up his name. And he's been out there looking for uh, different opportunities uh, that benefit the city. So we already have one person under contract. And uh, we ourselves are advocates and uh, there's businesses that come and ask us and, hey, could you, would you be in support of this type of uh, restaurant, or this type of hotel, or this type of situation? And then we lead them to our staff and they do that. So I really feel that businesses uh, look to a city like Hawthorne because they're on the constant pro where the, the most uh, the next business opportunity is for them. And if we uh, if we had somebody trying to want to buy one of those motels, they would have done so and refurbished it and made it something profitable. So I think there's a natural thing that happens where people are looking to see, for Hawth- looking at Hawthorne. And you've got more than one person and tons of people looking at different sites, okay? No, no, this is no. We could give direction.
May I comment on what you said?
Yeah, just a moment, yeah, let me just finish. So the advocates, but then respectfully as well. You know, we want, everybody's over here all excited, can you bring a Porto, can you bring all this other stuff? Can you bring these high-end restaurants in? And uh, and the thing about that is, I mean, respectfully, okay, I'm not trying to, we had like uh, our planning director have an economic uh, report that says socio-economic report that says that certain that our city as a whole doesn't have the high enough income to support some of these businesses that we want this guy to perform magic and recruit. So we can't have it one way or the other, so you know, is that report false? We don't want to believe it, are we in denial? Or, you know, do we trying to do some type of magical thing here? So uh, I'm willing to give the, the gentleman, his group a ch- a chance, an opportunity. I like to say limited basis or whatever the, the la- uh, the desire of the, my council colleagues is. Because everybody's been talking about economic development, this, a person, a group. But after a year, what is the baseline? What is the baseline going to be to see if that was success? Um, if these businesses come in, are they going to just be uh, come in because they naturally would have come in and would have been seeking the city and starting the process on their own? Just like we have a Councilwoman Reyes English mention certain things. What if all we get is other faias paredes, ninety-nine, big lots and stuff, people wanting to come in? You know, et cetera, are we going to deny them? You know, these uh, what do you call these prohibitions, what do we call them?
Moratoriums.
Moratoriums, they're limited, you can't have them, you can't discriminate on the businesses that apply. You can't say, no, it's just limited on, in the amount of time. So what is the baseline? How are we going to determine if these gentlemen or the group actually made some inroads in bringing people to us? How are we going to be distinguished or would this just naturally happen because people are looking to the city to move in? Do you guys see what I'm saying? Is it, are we going to be getting our money's worth by going with this group? So I just want you guys to consider that, I'm not ready to make a decision. Hopefully, we can absorb this much information and think about it and maybe at a, at a future meeting, we could decide. I don't know, whatever the desire of my colleagues is, I want to be a team player and support that concept that you guys have been saying.
Through the chair.
Go ahead.
Um, so you make a good point, Mayor. Um, and I'd like to know from the city manager. First of all, um, with the consultant that we already have, what would this group be doing that he is not doing for us now?
Attention, pay attention, because this is a good question.
Very good question, very different uh, aspects of work. If you uh, follow Mr. Foster's presentation, he's actually looking for vendors to come into the city. He's going to be at conferences, networking for the city of Hawthorne. Our other consultant is looking for real estate to obtain. So two different aspects. I'm assuming, Mr. Foster, with your comment, that you're going to be working with vendors and franchises to bring them to the city and start conversations. The other consultant is actually actively, actively looking for real estate opportunities for the city.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, it's a completely different.
And, okay, and so, so then, then my next comment would be, I think that we need this particular effort. Um, for a very long time, I have been um, advocating for an economic development director for, for years. Because um, and I know that the city wasn't able to afford it, that's why we never had it. But when, I've seen the results of what good economic development directors can do. And it has to do with aggressively pursuing opportunities in different places. Um, when there's no, because otherwise, we would have to have staff that does that. We don't have an economic development staff that, that could do that as well. And since we don't, we probably need to hire a consultant to do that. But a, a good economic development consultant finds opportunities, aggressively goes after them and then sees what's available, how they would fit within the city that, uh, within this city and how, um, how we could benefit from the opportunities. And, and we can always tailor what we're looking for as far as businesses. If we don't want certain kinds of businesses, we can say, don't look for this kind of business, look for that kind of business. But I think to, to have someone out there actually aggressively seeking opportunities is something we actually need and we've not had in this city. So I really think it's time.
Very good point.
That's correct.
And very good point, you know, do we need another dental office or another nail salon or?
Yeah, we don't. Yeah, we can, we can tailor that, we can say what we want. And we can ask that, that they seek those opportunities that we are actually looking for as opposed to just any opportunity.
So to move this along, uh, what is the desire of the council, because you're looking for direction, is that correct, Mr. City Manager?
Yes, I'm looking for direction. And one thing uh, that wasn't mentioned, the, the money that we're looking to spend is coming from the American Rescue Act money. Um, there's, in my opinion, not going to be many opportunities to tap into that type of funding. I think uh, with the possibility of the funding being there and working with HDL, I think this can be an opportunity for the city to make uh, traction moving forward.
So Mr. Mayor.
So I am looking for direction to move forward, thank you.
On that note, I make a motion.
Okay, that sounds fine.
Accept.
I'll second the motion.
Yeah, but can I make a condition before we go through the vote? Can we go for just the first year, right?
Well, is that defined, guys, is that defined?
The first year?
Well, most of the money is spent in the first year, it's only fifty-five thousand or something like that in the second year. So I mean, I think it's uh, that's most of the money is spent in the first year, but I think it's reasonable to have uh, evaluation after one year though.
Right, an evaluation?
Yeah, let's include an evaluation, of course.
And absolutely, I can work with Barry to set benchmarks quarterly and report back to, to council.
Perfect.
And also because of is the, the American Rescue Plan that's going to be going away in twenty twenty-four, so we want to make sure that we, we use the money correctly to benefit the city.
So how do we do it to have that allotted money in case of a second year, Mr. City Manager? In case of the second year, how would we do it, Mr. Foster? We, we say we, we have, we go for it, for it, for the first year, evaluation, I mean.
Yeah, well, we're, we're advocating, what we talked to the city manager about doing is taking it up, um, taking it out of the ARPA funds. And so you've got, you've got money budgeted for ARPA for business assistance. And so there's, there's money that's not allocated or not, not totally funded for that. So we, we would take that two hundred and five thousand dollars for the two-year period out of that. And so you, you can spend money for ARPA um, up through the, uh, the end of twenty twenty-six. Uh, actually through the twenty twenty-eight, has to be um, has to be allocated by the end of twenty twenty-six. So um, you can certainly pay for it next year too.
So what will, uh, my council colleagues, so after, after the year kind of a reviewer, you know? Look, what will be the results of a positive, obviously positive, we continue? What would be the result of a negative uh, review of the, of the program?
I think at this time, we should, we should not do that, right? Because we should maybe like Von said, do quarterly evaluation to find out.
Yeah, no, I know, but like.
At the end of the year, we'll decide if it's.
So, but what happens to the ARPA funds if they, okay, you know what? It's, I, I trust that there's going to be some good stuff coming.
Spend it on another, on another similar type project, but it's alloc- as long as it's allocated.
Allocated to the purpose, right?
Yeah, so we have it allocated and then we have to twenty twenty-eight to spend it.
Uh, well, we're counting on you, sir, so.
You made a motion?
I made a motion over it.
Please vote.
Who made the second?
I think the mayor seconded it.
I seconded it.
The mayor seconded it.
Okay.
Uh, Councilmember Montero made the motion and I seconded it, okay, Dan? Please vote.
The vote uh, reflects Mayor and council members voting yes.
Um, I have a request, tacos gavilan. Can you? Okay, she said Portos, I'd rather have a tacos gavilan.
Oh, no.
Why are you walking away, sir? This is, I'm serious. All right, thank you, sir, thank you, guys. All right, let's uh, it's starting to get late, um, but we know we have one of our uh, directors wanting to give a presentation. A brief presentation on the Hawthorne Bridge Housing Project. You could go on forever, you just uh, we know Kimberly Mack likes to get into detail, so. That's not a bad thing.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Okay, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. It's a pleasure to come before you this evening to bring to you this project for approval. Um, for um, a project known as the Bridge of Hope Community Housing Project. Um, this project, the name of the project was coined by our uh, Bridge Housing Ad-Hoc Committee, which was led by Councilmember Alex Montero and Angie Reyes English. Um, the proposed site for our bridge housing project is a unique parcel of land that is actually owned within the city of Hawthorne. Um, it's located at thirty-two hundred, one hundred and thirty-first street um, in Hawthorne or one hundred and thirty-first street and Sims Avenue. Um, the proposed completion date for our project, which is um, very hopeful, is February twenty uh, twenty-three. So just a little bit about how we're working our projects these days. We tend to work in teams because we find it most beneficial that we uh, you know, exercise our expertise amongst our departments at the, at the direction of our city manager. Um, so I'd like to introduce the team for this project for you. Overseeing it is um, Councilmember Alex Montero, Councilmember Angie Reyes English, Councilmember Vontray Norris. And the other departments are the city man, the city attorney's office, community services.
Go back to Vontray Norris, can you repeat? Councilmember, you're the secret, you're the write-in candidate for this election. He's a write-in candidate, we just don't know that yet.
Community Services, Hawthorne IT, IT, Hawthorne PD, Homeless Services, Housing Department and the Public Works Department. So we have a large group of individuals assisting with this project. I'm going to talk about a little bit about the design of the project, it may be kind of hard to see here. I described it earlier as a unique um, parcel of land and that's because it's very narrow. If you look at the picture in the PowerPoint, there is a red rectangle that outlines this uh, this parcel of land. And this is a preliminary design um, that the group has come up with for the property. Again, it's very small, so we're trying to do the most with what we have. Um, it is about twenty feet by a hundred and ninety feet or thirty-eight hundred square feet in total. And um, it will um, have a ten-foot fence around the entire property. Um, that's from the entry gate all the way around through the sides and the back and back around. Um, there will be a small administrative building that will be between twelve to fifteen insulated tiny homes. And they're tiny homes based on their measurement, that's eight foot long by eight foot wide. Um, some will be ADA compliant, there will also be restroom facilities on-site, at least one will be ADA compliant as well. There will be a laundry building that will hold four washers and four dryers on-site with uh, water hookups. There will be a, a nice back rack for those individuals who have uh, bikes for them to house there. There will be an outdoor bar-style seating, um, eating area. Just because of how the property is um, is in size, you can't get too many benches out there. So it'll be like a one-sided um, eating area there. And there will be uh, drought-tolerant green spaces, so they'll have something pretty to look at while they're there. Um, there'll be four hand-washing stations as well, located towards the back end of the property. And unlike most pallet shelters, this will have a emergency exit. So yes, there is one way in, but there's two ways out. I just wanted to give you a little overview of why um, we are offering these tiny homes and how they provide safe shelter to residents. So they offer locked doors and windows, a ventilation system, fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide detectors, smoke detectors, slip-resistant floors. Um, the units also include, you know, a matted bed, a desk, electricity, wall-mounted heaters and air conditioners. Um, and again, grounded utilities, so electricity will be grounded as well, and storage spaces. These units will not have running water and there will be no cooking allowed in the units. So this project is the next step towards housing um, Hawthorne's unhoused. It's the next natural step for us. We would be joining the ranks of other cities who have brought these projects to life. So no, we're not reinventing the wheel, we're not the first to do it, but we're the next ones to add temporary housing for the South Bay area, which is much needed because right now there's, it's very limited. Um, so if you look in the PowerPoint, you'll see that Ballarat Park, which is known as Esperanza Village, opened with twenty-five homes, tiny homes. And they've been successful to this point. Uh, the city of Los Angeles has done it over and over and over again. This is Alexander Park in North Hollywood, they have a hundred and three pallet shelters at this site. But amongst other projects that they have, they over, have over a hundred, um, over a thousand pallet shelters.
Where at?
Um, various other projects that they have combined, they have over um, a thousand.
Los Angeles?
Los Angeles.
Okay, because I thought at one oh three, I'm like, oh, they talk so much, yeah.
No, they have, they have tons. Uh, Redondo Beach started it off in South Bay with fifteen, they've been um, very um, successful there. And most recently, Torrance opened up with forty of their own. So Hawthorne is trying to come in with a manageable site um, of between twelve to fifteen pallet shelters. Um, and it's just uh, it's time for us to, to go there. So a little bit about what we're offering with this program. Um, while the focus tonight is yes, to approve the project in general, but what the project will do is provide housing to Hawthorne's homeless individuals. Um, the idea is to house uh, its population. Hawthorne's population is made up, homeless population is about eighty-eight percent homeless individuals, singles, not families, singles. And so that will be our focus. Given the size of the lot, we feel like it's the best use of the property. Um, also, the site will assist the individuals from about ninety to one hundred and eighty days or on a case-by-case basis, especially if they are already in the process of being assisted into temporary permanent supportive housing. Um, you know, it's still up to, um, it's still up to this, to discussion whether or not we leave it at just individuals because I know there is a consideration for, you know, why aren't we assisting families or families with kids and things of that nature? Um, but we do have other organizations that we work with. We contract with Family Promise of the South Bay who's, who specifically works with families with children and we would refer those types of services to them um, in those times for this case. Um, also, one of the best reasons for it to be uh, on an individual basis is considering there still are flus, COVID-nineteens and things of that nature. So this would help us cut down on those types of outbreaks and having to manage that, you know, on however often it may happen. Um, and then dealing with the best use of time for staff, why have to deal with? Why have to deal with, you know, he looked at me, he breathed on me, he's singing, the heat is too high, the AC is too cold? Why have to manage those types of responsibilities when you can focus more on the case management? So single individual households would be the best for this property, we believe. So the site itself will also have various types of staffing there. It will also have maintenance, but it will have onsite security. The site will also have security cameras mounted on poles that Hawthorne PD will look at. And Hawthorne PD will also offer additional enforcement in the area as needed. You know, throughout the course of these various shelters that we've visited, we always hear that the crime rate is very low. So while we don't perceive that there would be a major issue, we know that we've already planned ahead for something should that happen. We foresee this site being very safe. A service provider will be managed, will come in and manage the property to bring on onsite case management, job training, the three meals per day, and then they will connect us to additional service providers that will be needed, such as mental health or medical assistance or substance abuse. So our telehealth vans could assist us with this project. And LACADA and other service providers we can partner with to make this the best site for our city. The end goal of this project is to be able to provide permanent supportive housing, taking Hawthorne's unhoused and reducing those numbers over and over again until we can eradicate Hawthorne's housing issue and create that permanent supportive housing. Just a little bit about the funding. So the chart that we have here shows the type of funding that we have currently through the through the CDBG CV funding. We're allocating five hundred and sixty-nine thousand towards the cost and setup for this shelter. Those funds expire in twenty twenty-five. For a permanent local housing allocation grant or PLHA grant, there are two tranches. The first year at six hundred and twelve thousand and the second year at nine hundred and fifty-two thousand that we like to allocate to also assist with operating and the capital costs for the emergency shelters. And then the American Rescue Plan Act, the council has already approved one point three million that expires in twenty twenty-six for assisting persons who are at risk of experiencing homelessness. So the idea here is that these fundings are coming from grants, it's not from the general fund, and they are restricted funding and can only be used for this intended purpose or a similar purpose. Right now, there's a total of about three point million available for this project. And depending on, you know, how the project goes, we may come back to the council for additional funding. We'd like to see the the project run for three years to determine if it's really helping our homeless program. One year is not going to determine that, two years is not going to determine that. So if we can get a solid three years to see what effect it's making on our homeless population, that would be the most beneficial. And so we would come back at a later time to to request assistance for funding if necessary. Or until the funding runs out and the city says we no longer want it.
Other grants will come too.
And other grants will be made available, that is correct. So staff recommends that you approve the program or the project. And we'll be happy to answer any questions that you have at this time.
I'll be happy to make a motion accepted.
Second, please vote. Oh, I should have gave you, okay.
That's okay.
For the record.
It's all good.
I'll give the second over to.
Thank you, Kimberly, you did a great job. Thank you so much.
Is that okay?
Thank you, that's good.
She had intended, I didn't hear her, I'm so sorry.
So at least now people can rest in peace that we're not going to do tiny shelter home at one eleven and Hawthorne Boulevard.
I was scrapped.
But actually, I really commend my council colleagues and for for being on being on this committee and my council colleagues for supporting this. People talk about, oh, get rid of them, get rid of them. Yeah, okay, I can understand it, absolutely. We need to regulate and we need to enforce, but how can we do that if we don't have somewhere where they can turn to to stay and so we can get them off the street?
Yep.
Okay? This is the beginning, okay?
City manager.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, well done.
All right, guys, so this is the way, this is we we're, it's like nine thirty. We have our a couple of items on the agenda. What do you need? Huh?
We can vote.
We didn't vote yet?
Yeah.
I thought we did.
The vote reflects mayor and council.
So we have two closed sessions, we have our reports, we have actions. We need to be efficient, guys. I know some of us need to like to, you know, go on and on and on about all the great things and the vacation time and what he did.
Stop whining and let's go.
Okay. No, but I just, for that same reason, I need to make sure that you guys know that we could. Okay?
Okay.
That's it. Absolutely. Consent calendar, managers.
City managers consent calendar, we have items twelve through nineteen. Item twelve, approval of purchase of Gapfax Sewer Vacuum and Hydro Excavation Truck. Item thirteen, First Amendment to the Consultant Agreement for Building Plan Check Services. First Amendment between the City of Hawthorne, City and CSG Consultants Consultant. Item fourteen, letter of support for a sound wall along Interstate four oh five and City of Hawthorne's Glasgow Park. Item fifteen, Community Project Funding Grant, CPF, City Properties Revitalization Project. Item sixteen, progress payment number four in the amount of nine hundred fifteen thousand, five hundred and fifty-two dollars and seventy-nine cents due to Sequel Contractors, Inc. of Santa Fe Springs, California, for a local street improvement project twenty twenty-two, project number twenty-two dash zero four. Item seventeen, retiree healthcare plan, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, GASBS seventy-five actuarial report. Item eighteen, agreement between the City of Hawthorne and Harrison Associates for various affordable housing advisory services. Item nineteen, agreement between the City of Hawthorne and the City of Inglewood for supplemental law enforcement, medical director services.
I make the motion?
Second.
Second, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council voting yes.
Thank you, colleagues, city, city attorney's consent calendar, Diana, please.
Item twenty, deny claim for damages submitted by Tanya Mora. Mr. Mayor, that concludes the city attorney's consent calendar.
Motion, I move. Second, please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
Action of discussion item, mask mandates during council and commission meetings, council member Montero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, may I interrupt you?
Sir.
Just for clarity, did we read item nineteen into record?
Mm-hmm.
You did?
Yeah, medical director, medical director.
Thank you.
We, did we or should we just?
No, we did.
We did twelve through nineteen.
We did.
Everything was approved.
Thank you.
In your calendar.
Well, if we didn't, if you listen to video, then we'll have to bring it back. Okay? But as far as everybody knows, okay.
Yeah, we did.
Go ahead.
All right, the discussion was brought up because a lot of people out there is asking, when are we going to seize this mandate mask in our city council meeting? You know, because, you know, guys have been going on the streets a lot, so people are saying, when are you guys going to get rid of the mask? So since LA County has left all the all the mask mandate in restaurants and and other places, other venues, so I think we should just get rid of the mask. That's my recommendation.
Motion.
I make a motion for us to.
Second. Please vote. Does everybody understand what we're voting for, just eliminate, okay, for.
Eliminate the mask.
For the council or for city hall as well?
Well, I think Von already left that already.
I think they want everybody, everybody. We're tired of the, we're tired of the mandates, but today I have a cold.
Are you guys, you're not crazy about this, man? All right.
I vote yes.
Oh, okay, okay.
Vote reflects mayor and council voting yes, with council member Patterson abstaining.
All right, next item, sir, outdoor dining in the city of Hawthorne, Montero?
Well, the, it was a lot of question out there, our business, especially the restaurants that did the outdoor dining, right? In during the pandemic, and they wanted to see if they can continue to do the outdoor dining. And I think there is no sunset clause on that, but there is a permit fee that was waived during the pandemic. But now seeing things are going, start to go back to normal, are we going to say that they have to come and reapply and pay a fee? Or we just let it go the way it is? Because a lot of people are asking.
Mr. City Manager, can you answer that?
Yes, I have staff here that can assist me with that.
Oh, Akbar, of course, Akbar.
Thank you, Akbar.
Good evening, Mayor and Mayor Pro Tem and council member. Yes, they need to come and submit their application and from December twenty twenty-one, they need to pay the fee.
How much is it?
Hundred dollar per year.
Hundred dollars per year?
Yeah, it's nice.
Ideally, it should be profit, additional profit they should make by being outside, right?
Yes.
Um, city, city manager, I have a question. The economics of it all. Do we have, I wish the gentleman who was here that was going to be working for the economic development.
Mr. Foster.
Yeah, Mr. Foster. Do we have, do we have known data that shows that there's a great bump in increase in revenue for people who offer the outside dining? Just so we know if we're just kind of just putting this out there, it's not going to bear fruits for the businesses.
That's a tough question for me to answer for each business. I'm not sure what the revenue stream is for each business, but Akbar, could you provide the number of permits we have allowed applications?
Yeah, we, in the whole city, we have one hundred fifty-three restaurant. Only twelve of them, they came, they apply, twelve. They applying for dining, outside dining.
Okay, so they're seeing the benefit of it, so they wouldn't be applying if it wasn't going to work for them. I hate to ask this question, but do you, do you, do you think that they might complain about a hundred dollar fee?
I don't think so.
And Mr. Mayor, we have to consider their staff time that goes into that, and I think to be equitable, I think, you know, staff time is valuable, and I don't think a hundred dollars would break anyone's bank at this point.
On the outside, yeah, all right. So I believe.
And the reason that they want, they want to continue, right? So that that's the basic, because that's what the people calling and asking, you know, can we continue? Because, you know, they think that we're going to cease to do that, so.
Yes, they can't continue.
Yeah, that's that's the question.
Here, Pro Tem.
Thank you, Akbar.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to continue.
Second. Please vote.
The vote reflects mayor and council members voting yes.
And in all fairness, this this discussion, the outside dining has been a topic of conversation in our council, and we know that Councilwoman Valentine, just to give her credit where credit is due, she was a very vocal proponent of that, so I'm glad that you brought it. Would you have any comments on this?
Well, I'm I'm just saying, I just wanted to say that it should, I'm I'm, I was hoping that it would have been more universal than it has turned out to be because we, I think he said we have twelve restaurants that have that are take, have taken advantage of it. That's not nearly what I was hoping for. I was hoping that we'd have, you know, at least half the businesses taking advantage of it. But I think one of the things we probably should do with the new consultant we have is to get advice from him on the outdoor dining that we're doing. I think that we need to provide a way for the restaurants to have more, you know, have have a better showing for the outdoor dining. I've I've been to El Segundo where they they actually build, it's almost like shelters in areas where where they have the outdoor dining. They have barriers from to divide it from the street. They have landscaping, they have a top, top shelters for it, and it presents a very attractive picture. Other than Earth Cafe, I don't know of any restaurants in Hawthorne that do that, that do it as as exquisitely as that. I think we need to put some money into that and encourage the restaurants to do that, to actually build out their outdoor dining facilities so they're attractive.
Eureka's is pretty nice.
And.
Oh, yeah.
Eureka. And also, Micael Fornia is doing it.
They are, they are, they even have like concerts there now.
I haven't seen their outdoor dining at Micael, California.
Yeah, the, and you, and you write me Valentine, because it's not just, you know, Manhattan Beach, but also even in in Palm Springs, for example, they put, you know, those burials, they make, they make, you know, those road burials, you know, like make sure that the pedestrians is are safe, so cars don't go through through that, and they put landscaping and they make a very, very nice.
They make them very attractive, but the city actually has to put some money into that, and I think we should be willing to do that.
Yeah.
So this is a start.
Maybe out of the Hopper money.
All right, folks, so let's move on to the elected officials' reports recommendations. Oh, Fay Johnson has already been appointed to the commission. Yeah, we did at the beginning, we brought it to the front. I think you might have, okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
It's right there, wave missed.
Welcome.
So let's try to, let's try to get through these elected officials report pretty quickly. Go ahead, city treasurer.
All right. Oh, good evening. Uh, yeah, I just want to talk about a few things. I went and bought deodorant today and I was surprised that it was locked up. And I talked to the store person there and I said, are people stealing deodorant? And she said, yes, they steal the whole shelf and they did it three times, so then they had to put up, you know, a whole thing. And then in another incident later, a few weeks earlier, I saw at a shopping grocery store, you know, somebody stealing something and one of the night, she was a very nice lady, I've seen her there all the time, you know, said, hey, where are you going with that? And he said some obscene, terrible, mean things to her. And I just thought the whole shoplifting thing, just from living, I I'm not saying I know what to do about it, but maybe I'm just venting. But I just really feel for the people that work in retail and have to deal with this, and it seems crazy. Like, we're going to go into stores and everything's locked up now. It's really depressing. And then, you know, one of the things with the, I'm not trying to talk anymore about cannabis, I'm really not, but one of the things I just, you know, I worry about with that business is it's all cash-based, and I think it's terrible. I think it's a bad idea that they they can't get banked, but that's just one of the problems. It's not so much the whole issue, it's just that it's all cash and cash causes problems. That's, you know, a lot of it. And just kind of really making sure that, you know, everything that's done with the cash and even for the city, city employees, I guess they have to, you know, bring it, bring the cash in for the taxes and stuff like that. Hopefully, they change the rules on that, but that's just one of the things is like a treasurer, like the whole, you know, cash management, it's going to add a more layer of complications, you're going to have employees handling the cash and all that. And it's really kind of crazy that they're not banked because there's a bunch of reasons, but yeah, I just worry about that cash aspect of it and I'm steering clear of everything else. And then I also just wanted to talk about the measure I, you know, I really don't support that. It's, it's not so much that I think the council doesn't, you know, well, I think it's a little much, but it's just going to attract the wrong type of people that are going to be sitting up here in the future. They're going to be like more professional politicians. I really like it where it's part-time and we're good stewards and we have a really strong city manager kind of driving things. You know, I think that's a better setup for the city versus having, no, I mean, people, all kinds of people can get elected, but it's just, you know, I think it could wreak havoc, you know, if it's, you know, that much money and, you know, all these people would start running then, and I just don't think it's good long term. And that's all I'm going to say about that, but I really don't think that's a good move. Long term, I think it could really kind of have negative effects, not even just the fiscal amount of it, but just how it's going to attract the wrong type of people that we, you know, kind of want up here. And yeah, just why I'm running for treasurer, this is probably the last election, am I running out of time? The last election, you know, last, you know, call before the election. Yeah, it's, I've been here for two years now, I've learned a lot. You know, my first thing when I come into a new position is to kind of learn what's going on. And, you know, I really respect the finance department, they've been huge in helping. And I wouldn't be running again if I didn't have, feel like there's a lot of integrity in the Hawthorne Finance Department and, you know, somewhere where I could really, you know, they make the job very, you know, not super easy, like very easy, you know, to come in and and do it. And mainly, it's just to have trust with the, that the finance department is doing, you know, a great job. And then also just implementing new, new things. I want to improve the the office after I leave so that the next treasurer, you know, has more tools available. Yeah, and, you know, I am a CPA, I am a registered investment advisor, and that that does help with a lot of financial stuff and that background. But also just the experience of working as a treasurer, you learn a lot. So I definitely think I'm way better. So I, I definitely think I'm way better equipped to be a treasurer on this coming, you know, election and going forward than when I, when I started, because, uh, it's quite different. Um, and I will leave it at that, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anything from the City Clerk's Office?
Um, just a reminder that, um, to vote. And also everybody should have got their vote by mail ballots by now. If you're a registered voter in Hawthorne, you should have received one. And for information regarding anything to do with voting, you can go to lavote.gov.
Thank you. Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you. So, um, I, I don't have very much, I did want to make an observation about the people who came in today to speak about, uh, cannabis and other things. Um, the cannabis had, this is something that the city council had, has worked on for a very long time. A committee involved and also, um, with the town hall meetings. And I can remember when we first started, I would encourage people to come to the town hall meetings and express their positions, and they didn't do it. And so I was very, I was kind of sad today when I saw some of the people who were coming up here to express positions and they felt like they hadn't been heard. But, um, the, it, it was advertised and, um, I, I was disappointed because they didn't come when the town hall meetings. When I, when I went to the town hall meetings, I noticed there were very few citizens there. And I wondered at the time why weren't more were not coming. So I want to take this opportunity to say that whatever you want your city council to do, you need to have a voice in it, you need to make sure that you come. And you express your positions when the time is right and when, um, and when meetings are called, you come to the meetings at that time, so that your voice will be heard. And for those who, who felt that their voices were not heard, I'm sorry for that. And, um, please pay attention, so that, um, you will in the future, um, have your voice heard and have, have a say in whatever, whatever you want to see happen. And I think that's all I have at the moment. Um, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, uh, who usually goes next?
It goes to me.
Councilmember Montero.
Thank you. Uh, first I want to say thank you to all of the residents and business and organization who came for the forty annual community dinner on last Thursday, uh, for the Hawthorne President's Council. So we did raise about four thousand dollar, but I'm pretty sure more checks are coming. Uh, for that money is going to go for the holiday assistance programs, that Thanksgiving and Christmas. So thank you for those who donate. Also, you know, congratulate to Alaric Simon, resident of the Holly Park. He became the president of the Lions Mobile Screening Unit, uh, on Sunday. So I went there to celebrate with, with the Lions Club, so he became the president. So he had a lot of good things to say. And you know that Hawthorne, we've been taking advantage of that, the Mobile Screening Union, unit that have screened, you know, last year we gave two hundred and twenty glasses to people. And this year we gave about eighty glasses to, uh, kids and families, so thank you for that. Uh, congratulate to, uh, city departments, especially from the city manager to the community services, the public works, for all of those got involved with that Holly Park, uh, Holly Park, Holly Glen renovation, uh, project, the reopen, uh, was beautiful and the park is beautiful. So thank you for all that work, it was well done. I also attend the AYSO Region Twenty-One, the VIP Soccer Clinic that took on this past Saturday. Uh, upcoming November eighth, beside the election, the Hawthorne and the housing, uh, the Fair Housing Foundation is going to have a landlord tenant walk-in clinic, right here at City Hall. Okay, so November eighth at ten to twelve, uh, we're going to have, uh, Fair Housing Foundation is going to do a landlord and tenant walk-in clinic. So what issues you have, come and learn how to deal with it, housing issues, okay? Right here, November eighth at ten to twelve, right here in City Hall. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank all of those residents who came to express their opinion. And like you said, this is a democracy, America is the great country in the world. And we can speak our mind and be civic about it and move on, so God bless, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
I'll be brief, thank you, Mayor. Um, just want to give a couple of announcements. The County of Los Angeles Grand Jury is looking for citizens. I'm going to pass this on to our City Clerk's Office for more information on how you could volunteer to be part of the civil, uh, grand jury service, I'll pass that along. I want to commend and thank Assemblymember McKenna and Congresswoman Maxine Waters for the donations that they made to the city. Kudos, um, to the city and kudos to them for thinking of us and giving us, um, such a large amount. I believe, uh, the city, uh, from the State Assembly received, uh, five million, if that.
Five point five.
Five point five million. And Congresswoman Maxine Waters also provided another five, five hundred thousand. So thank you to, um, our women in, in, uh, both positions. Um, I just want to also thank, um, Ms. Kimberly Mack for the great presentation. Look forward to seeing that, uh, housing come to fruition. It's been one in the making for a couple of years now. And, uh, it's good to know that we're going to be moving forward to provide housing to those that are with, with, uh, without. Um, just, uh, want to, um, commend the hard work of all our, all of our department heads and everyone that continues to keep our city looking great. And for all your contributions, including, including our police department, uh, in our public safety. And I can't express, uh, enough. I'm going to be doing, um, be hosting again the fifteenth annual Operation Gobble here at City Hall, um, with a few of my colleagues that are going to be, um, assisting and being present with me on that day, Friday, November eighteenth. And any contributions you can make to the City of Hawthorne to assure that someone, um, that has no turkey, has no, no, no side dishes, uh, are able to receive a turkey and, and get what they need for, um, their Thanksgiving. Again, that's going to be on Friday, November eighteenth. You must be a Hawthorne resident and please call City Hall to register. And so look forward to that, thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor Protem.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I want to first thank, uh, staff for your hard work. Uh, it's a long meeting, a lot of stuff on the agenda. I know, uh, I want to thank, uh, city ma- or city attorney's office specifically for the hard work that, that they've, um, put in with the, uh, cannabis ordinance along with our planning department as well. I know it's a lot, it was a lot over the last number of months. Uh, and thank our police department as well for their hard work. And really appreciate the spirit of community service and community policing that our police department has. Uh, I want to thank the community for coming out and participating in the process, making your voice heard and, and let us know how you feel. I, um, always welcome, always welcome that, whether it, you know, we agree or disagree. Uh, I, I love that, um, I want us to have a very involved community, uh, that votes, uh, that makes their voice heard and make sure they have representatives that represent them and, and their interests. I, I do want to apologize for my own words, uh, during public comment, if you guys witness was something very personal, right, between two people. But, uh, don't want to discount the fact that I appreciate everybody for voicing their opinion, uh, whether it's consistent with my opinion or not. Um, you know, this is what it's all about. I think the, the greater community involvement that we have, uh, in our political system and process, the better of a community that we have. So I definitely appreciate you guys for, for coming out and those that stayed to the end. This is actually pretty rare, so I appreciated that. Uh, I want to thank, uh, my council colleagues for, um, you know, your, your, uh, hard work over the process of, uh, handling the, the cannabis ordinance and, and all the other things on the agenda. Uh, the, the homeless, um, the shelters or the palace. Um, me and many of my colleagues have volunteered for many committees in, over the last year and, and put in a lot more work than I have. And I think I've put in a lot, a lot of work, um, by hosting those, those, uh, those committees and those commissions. And, you know, definitely, uh, take my hats off to, to, for each of you guys, uh, for the events you guys put together. Um, and the, uh, just all, just the spirit of community service, you know, with obviously very little compensation. I did want to make a couple requests. Um, I, based upon the request of some community members, I'd like to ask that we look at putting some speed bumps on one hundred and forty second place between Judah and Isis in Holly Glen. Also, I would like to make sure that my request to donate some money to Operation Gobble was received by, by staff and we get some money, um, over to Operation Gobble and support, support those efforts. And of course, want to encourage everybody to come out and vote. There was some communication out that the, a couple of days ago was the last day to register to vote, but that was the last day to register to vote by mail and, and online. Uh, and if you know anybody that's not registered to vote, that do, does want to participate in the process, they will be able to register to vote, register to vote on the spot at the polling locations once they open. Polling locations open up ten days prior to November eighth, I don't know what day that is off the top of my head, so it's next couple of days. And, and, um, you will be able to register to vote on the spot and vote that day. So, uh, it's not too late for anybody, uh, whether you just moved into the city or been here forever. Uh, let's make sure everybody gets out there and vote, thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. There's no go-bags? There shouldn't be any go-bags, I'm not going to break, man.
I did want it, one go-back. No, I just want to congratulate the candidates and good luck to you all and, um, yeah, work hard, work hard, thank you.
Can I add something on the speed bump? Dory. Now they want speed bump like the Cordary. Like one thirty-nine to Rose Grant.
Um, and let's just, uh, I'm in support of the speed, okay, ready?
Yeah.
So, um, I know speed bumps, speed bumps and I was, you know, I think we should, uh, look into that. But let's make sure our traffic engineers take a look at that, because speed bumps may not be conducive, uh, the proper response depending on the speed and the width and the different types of, uh, traffic that goes in there. So I'd like to support the speed bumps, uh, pending on a, uh, traffic review.
And Miss Mayor, I have to say that, you know, to thank you, the public works, because now Cordary Avenue, beautiful, car slowing down.
Good. So, um, okay, so the next, I'd like to congratulate the city, uh, our staff and Parks and Recs Department for, in particular for the, uh, Holly Glen, uh, park renovation. Uh, we received, uh, great positive feedbacks at the charrettes that you guys had, um, the three, uh, charrettes that you guys had. So that went well, and so there was a great response to that and people were all excited. There were some additional, uh, requests that came in from a couple of residents that lived, uh, close to, right across the street from the location. But, um, I think, uh, we were able to mitigate those concerns, correct?
Absolutely, they actually, I, I should have shared the email, they sent the email to staff and to myself, thanking us for our attention to detail and appreciate, appreciating the good work that we did there.
I, I saw the email, I just wanted you to say that, that was just.
Great.
Alright, but, but great job, great job, guys. Um, and then I also want to congratulate, uh, well, actually not yet, but, uh, wish good luck to all the candidates.
Let's say congratulate me.
Yee-haw, there, well, now I'm going to say something different, nah. Well, I know, seriously, you know, I think, uh, the tone of this election has been positive, nothing crazy, you know, nothing bad, people are just saying what they stand for. And, uh, you guys will be the judge of that, measure I and all the other measures, et cetera. Um, but just like you guys are doing research for your, uh, for the candidates and trying to find out information about them, et cetera. I'm going to, I'm going to just really say, I have to say this. And I appreciate that people come to the, to the podium today and give all these comments and feedbacks on the different items that they agree with or disagree with. We need to have, uh, residents here in the city of Hawthorne. We compare, so why are we not like these other cities? Why are we not like Torrance? Why not we not like the Manhattan Beach? Why not we like, you know, they're on, they're on it when it comes to looking at what's on the agenda, proactive, looking at what's on the website, looking at the agenda, looking at all the bills, anticipating what's going on, become members of their local neighborhood associations, okay? So now, like, thinks, something that's been worked on for like a whole year, never heard from anybody that came today at any of those meetings, any of the, uh, any of the council meetings on top of it. And now all of a sudden you got like opposition to something that you could have had, interjected your commentary with regards, regards to that. Okay, so, uh, that's what upsets me, it, it upsets me, because all of a sudden you got a lot to say at the end, but you're not part of any neighborhood association. Once you have a problem across your street, then you go to your neighborhood association and expect them to vouch for you and to push for you. If somebody gives you one little piece of information, you think that's, no, educate yourself, be involved, be proactive, so you know what's coming next and you're prepared and you insert yourself in the process, okay? I, I really, I really stand by that. And be very proactive. And also to all our neighbors in the different parts of our city, there's different corners to our, our city. It's, it doesn't just happen to, it's more than just your neighborhood and that's all you care about. It matters what happens in the other parts of Hawthorne, how it affects, how Hawthorne is viewed and how it affects you. A human body, if I have like a problem with my toe, one single part of my body, one area of my body, it affects how I walk, how I'm able to, you know, do exercise, how I'm able to, you know, be healthy, okay? So be proactive, do something different and be on top of things, so that later on these things don't catch you by surprise. Because we're not hiding information from you, we're putting out the notices, we're putting out all the information online, et cetera, the proper notices by law, there's nothing that's not transparent, so, okay? Be active, folks, be active and be proactive. We have a, but thank you for giving your comments, but now this is a wake-up call. Okay, we have our first closed session tonight. Madam Clerk, please read item twenty-four into the record.
Uh, item twenty-four, Public Employee Performance Evaluation pursuant to Government Code, Section five four nine five seven B concerning City Manager, Von Trin Norris.
Is there anybody that wants to speak on this item? If not, oral communication is closed ordered. Um, folks, let's just go immediately to the back, take care of business, come back and move on to the next closed session. It's about ten oh six and we can't, we shouldn't have to be here long, let's go.
Thank you.
Yes, yes.